That better? Yeah, there you go. Who is that? It's catching inside. Okay, I would think we should call a meeting to order and make the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag, and I pledge allegiance to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with a purpose and justice for all. We'll take a quick roll call. Isla?
Yes.
Bob?
Yes.
James? James?
Yes.
And Larry?
Yeah.
Okay, so all present. You have the minutes or the first thing in your packet and last time. So we'll just take a quick approval of those if you have time to read them. Got a couple of pages there. Try to get the packets out on Thursday before the meeting. If you guys find that you want them earlier, problem is, it seems like everything comes up just before the meeting. But we can try to get them out earlier if you feel like you need them earlier too. So I would entertain a motion for approval of minutes.
Do you have minutes in your packet? Must be our first. I don't think we're going to have any. Do you have minutes in your packet?
Should be.
They should be.
They should be.
I don't have any. I got one at home.
You don't even have any on your phone?
They should be.
They're right there.
Anybody else who need them? I think she said to pack it out on Thursday, didn't she? So I predict she probably had a copy of them.
She did.
Yeah. Are there no more copies? Yeah, Bob. Thank you, Aaron.
I'll approve the minutes.
James is making a motion to approve the minutes for the
I second it.
May third meeting. Seconded by Larry. So James?
Hi, yes.
Larry?
Yes.
Isla?
Yes.
And Bob?
Yeah.
Okay, the next thing on the agenda is the well permit crop den community school. Most of the building permits, and as you know, we don't always bring them to the council because Mike can put those through the candidate there in the office, but the well permits by law have to be approved by the council.
Is it possible to amend the order of council meeting so that we can put ordinance 314 out because it's pertinent and relevant to the rest of the meeting to go through 314 and take a look at that before we continue on with the rest? I'd like to make a motion as soon as I can.
A second.
I have an objection, but I trust to it. I don't know why it's pertinent, whatever, but I have no information on Bob, so. So moved by Bob. Seconded by James. To reorder the agenda so that 314 comes up now. Larry?
Yeah.
Isla?
Yes.
Bob?
Yeah.
And James?
Yes.
Okay, Bob. To deal.
Well, we've been talking about 314 for a while. I think that the first paragraph. My computer won't work. Do we have the passwords so I can access the [inaudible] computer?
We have another copy of it on there.
Okay.
Okay. 42 speed.
I doubt, I like that we probably don't have copies where this is, so.
Oh, no.
Isla? Okay. We didn't put a copy in, did we? Okay. Bob, go ahead.
But in 104, section 104, which is, it doesn't match because our ordinance 314 and our 104 also, how the numbering system works, it doesn't work border application. We're looking at striking that first paragraph, moving that first paragraph in the orders, whatever that ordinance should number it would be. And I guess we're looking at open our up into discussion about that. The relevance of that.
Well, you're gonna have to go ahead because when you say "we," you know.
I'll make a motion to remove that paragraph.
Read the paragraph, please, and then you're gonna have, you know. I don't, do you still want 314 because if you take the paragraph out, it's irrelevant, right?
Does it make it irrelevant?
Well, can I give a little background?
Yep.
Maybe a little bit?
Yep.
Could I have a shirt on?
Yeah.
That ought to be given.
Right.
Is that speaker? I got caught. I don't know. Then teach me from law school. Well, what you have, what you've had and have are kind of like this. The section 1, you used to have section 104 in your books, okay? And 104 is pretty, is pretty close to what the state law is. Then what happened, it looks like to me, is that you pass three four, ordinance 314, which became the new 104. And what was done was it was added in to this, this top paragraph, which then maybe where the city went to a city administrator. Okay? And most of that stuff that's in state law was incorporated into that, and there were some other things that were added to it as far as the authority of it was concerned. So when you're looking at taking out the top paragraph, you're, you're taking out, there are some things that are not in there that is allowed by state law. And so, but if you take the top paragraph out, you've pretty much got what you previously had. So that's kind of where you're sitting at.
Can you read that top paragraph? Do you have it right there?
Yep, I do. So what currently is in section 104, and 104 is, you know, about, because you really got two parts. You got 314, you got ordinance 314, which is 104, and then you get section 214, which is the language regarding the city administrator, and it goes into a whole bunch of details as far as that authority is concerned. But the top paragraph on 104 says, "The mayor of the city shall have super-attendance and control of the affairs of officials of the city. Day-to-day operations of the city shall be in direct supervision of the city administrator." Then it refers to that 214. "In the event of a vacancy occurs in the office of city administrator, the mayor shall directly oversee the day-to-day operations of the city. The mayor may consult with and advise the city administrator during the interim between the scheduled meetings of the mayor and city council. The administrator may act upon such advice at his/her discretion until such time as the city council reconvenes to consider the matter." When you look at, so that paragraph is new. The next one that comes into play has some of the same stuff. But it doesn't have all of the things that, oh, there it is there. Goes on to the next page. So the top paragraphs is what was added to supplement, to kind of bridge over to 214. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
So you got it, so if you're dealing with this, you've really got two parts. You got the top part that's new, and then you've got a new section 214, which is the city administrator. Does that make sense?
So it would, if, would we be doing the same thing? Because I had made the remark, what somewhere, that if we just simply rescind the 314 or the 214 or 314, whatever, and just went back to the 104, you'd be in line with what the state requires? Because you can't go against the state, is that correct? Basically?
Yeah, what you'd have to, if you want to go back to the way it was, okay, you got two parts that you really need to do. You need to, first of all, get rid of 214, which is the administrator, city administrator, okay? And then you have to delete the first paragraph, what is now 104, which transitioned over to 214.
Okay, so that went into 104, the 315 went into 104?
The 315 included the 104. Yeah, what it did is it took 104 and it added another paragraph to talk about the city administrator.
So we just basically re, get rid of it back to the 104, the original 104?
To get back to the original 104, you need to get rid of 214, and you need to get rid of first paragraph of 314. Because 214 is what is, what the number is in the code. Okay? And so the 314 would be the, is what the ordinance was, but, but its reference is 104.
And 104.
It's not like you feel like a baseball guy, 104, 314, and 214, whatever it is.
But 104 on here will stand alone with the second paragraph. If we exclude the first paragraph, it does fall within state ordinances for mayor's responsibility.
Is the original 104 in the red book there, Mike?
Original 104 is in the, is in the red book.
And it's almost, it's word for word, the rest is almost, isn't it?
Yes.
You took that paragraph out. That's why I said.
There's a difference in that second paragraph. I like to read it into that first paragraph in that second. "When the mayor shall preside at all meetings of the city council and may vote when, his or her vote shall have the decision of any matter. Legislation and transaction of the mayor shall, for purpose of such vote, be deemed to be a member of the city council. He or she's signature must appear on the city clerk's minutes at all meetings. He or she must sign all resolutions which have been passed warrants for payments of money when ordered by the city council. Provided any ordinance he's told by the mayor may be passed over his or her veto by two-thirds folks, by the members of the city council. But if the mayor neglects it and refuses to sign any ordinance and returns it to the city, to the council, with his or her objection in writing at the next regular meeting, the same shall become the law without his or her signature. He or she shall, from time to time, communicate to the council such information and recommendation as then." And then it goes on to.
As necessary.
So, so the biggest thing is when ordered by the city council has to approve any paying of bills, warrants, paychecks ordered by the council first. That's in that second paragraph, and that's what we want to keep in there. Correct, Mike? Well, you have, we don't have really, well, the part that you had in here is, it was in the original 104.
Right.
And that's that one I just read.
Correct.
But it's also partly in, in this, this one here too.
That's my question. Can we just go back to the original 104? Is that what you guys want?
Yes.
Thank you. So the council decides how the town ran.
How what?
The town ran.
That's not what it says. It says.
When the council, when the council approved.
The bills.
Bills.
By the council or paid the bills?
Paid bills.
Exactly. Now, you already did that.
Let me see that. Let me see that, Larry. There, let me see that. You know, the only thing that I would tell you that I'm concerned that I have with the old one that you had is that was, that was approved back in 2001.
Right.
Okay? And so obviously since that time, they've, you know, they're tinkering with it a little bit, so it's not exactly what the state law is.
So we want to go with the state. I mean, we've got, we've got to comply with the state, right?
Yes.
Yes, okay. So that could change, right? But the, when you're looking at the new one, the 314 and stuff, if you make those adjustments, then it complies with state by getting rid of that first part?
If you get rid of the first, you have to get rid of the first part.
Right.
That's, that and the 214, that's, that's a given. You know, the, the old one isn't exactly the same as the new one. I mean, what's left of 104 now isn't the same as what it was.
Do you want, Mike, to just rewrite, just write an ordinance and, and you can send it out to all of you, take a look at stuff at the next meeting? And?
I mean, I can go through and take the, you know, go check the state law and put all the things down into one bill to, to put it into 104 so you have exactly what state law is.
It needs to be dealt with because.
You can do that, or you go with that, Mike?
Yeah, are we gonna eliminate the, the second part of the 214 with the city administrator or?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't think there's any problem getting rid of that.
Yeah, because there is no city, yeah.
You know, so then.
If, if the city would decide to rehire another administrator, they would want to write an ordinance that would be appropriate for that time anyway. So as long as there's not one round, should be apropos to what you have now, and then start writing one when you hire one.
Yeah, I would say that, you know, tonight, if you want, if you're looking at getting your code up to date and consistent with what the state law is, okay? Then what you'd want to do is get rid of this section, which is 214, okay? The city administrator. And then you'd want to get rid of the first paragraph of what's 104 right now, which, which leaves you back to sort of what it was.
I would like to see that the council has more input and more say-so before things happen under the board, you make decisions, and it happens. I don't want to see now the board finds out at the meeting that something else took place. That's what I have to see.
Well, if you, if you get, get rid of 214 and first paragraph of what is now 104, you get pretty close to what it was, used to be.
That the city council has approval of a lot of times.
Right. But.
Before, before it happens.
Plus, yeah, you have authority to make those decisions, and the mayor has certain authority that she has, you know, as, with state, with state law anyway. You know, she can veto things, and there'd have to be an override and that type of thing. But.
But everything kind of deploys the board for a pretty good, I mean, every day.
But then it would bring it, everything up to date as to what it is, and you'd probably end up having a couple more subsections than what you have now, because what you have now is you, you get, the old, the old 104 is this paragraph and this little bit paragraph here, and you probably want to break it down just a little bit so it's easier to, to read and understand, but then, you know, check with the code and see if there are any other changes to it.
Do we need, do we need to vote on that, Mike?
Yes, what you need to vote on, if you're going to, to get rid of that, you need to have, because you'd be basically doing an ordinance to repeal those parts of it. Your, your code provides that you can do that, you can suspend the rules under section 101-403. And what it says with that is that somebody would make a motion to introduce an ordinance. The problem is, we don't have a written ordinance for you to look at. Okay? But what would happen is, in the event that three-fourths of the members of the council present vote to dispense with the rule, an ordinance of a general permanent nature be fully read on three different days. Such ordinances may be passed by reading the title one time when introduced, okay? Read by a title the second time after the rule has been dispensed with, read at a, read at large the third time, and then put it in the final passage. So it would have to happen if somebody had to introduce a ordinance to say, "We want to get rid of 214 in the first paragraph of currently 104," okay? Then there'd have to be a motion to suspend the rules, okay? Then you'd have to read it the second time, then you'd have to read it again the third time, and then you could pass it, and you suspended the rules, and you can do it that way.
And we could do that at the next meeting, though, after it's written, right? Can we do, can we, because we don't have it in writing.
You don't have it in writing. I don't know that it requires to be in writing.
Okay.
But as long as everybody understands that that's what you're, what you're doing.
It has to be published now, so that we have to have it. If, if it's not in writing, it has to come back to us as soon, because it has to be published for 15 days before it becomes law. Is that correct?
No, what's, what this says is this.
All the ordinances.
Yeah, 1403 just says that, you know, when you dispense a rule, then you don't have to do, you're gonna have to eventually publish it. There's, there's two, no, two ways about that.
That's what I'm talking about, the publishing of the paper needs to happen.
Or they can be put into final passage.
After the final passage, we could have to publish it before it becomes the actual law?
Yeah.
Okay.
Oh, it becomes an ordinance tonight.
Those are ordinance tonight.
So the ordinance number, you like 06, 07?
Well, you would, you would, it's still under 104. It's still 104.
Don't you usually have to publish those and give us an affidavit that we passed them, and then what if we always practice? I mean, you know more about this than I do, probably, but we, we kind of always practiced in that, that they did not become law for 15 days until it had been published? Because you have to publish it to give the public a chance to complain?
I would propose to cross your city attorney, but I think the, it has to be published within 15 days.
Within 15 days, okay.
That's, that's the 15 days part that I understand.
Okay, okay. That's fine, thank you. And you said it has to be published, no doubt, so that's.
Yeah, it says, "Ordinance shall become effective upon publication or posting."
So you'd have to. Say that again.
Before 15 days, we gotta publish it in a paper or something like that, so we can get it done tonight.
Yeah.
Okay. The 15 days is specifically for minutes, but I'm not sure about.
Okay.
I have specifically.
I'm just going off the, you know, we gotta do this, gotta do that.
This is on 405, "The state clerk shall, 15 days after the passage of an ordinance."
There you go.
Published in the same legal newspaper of general circulation in the city.
Okay, within 15, it's okay. So it doesn't have anything to do with whether it's legal or not, just.
We gotta read it three times.
Thank you. Okay, so then you want to put that into a motion, that's exactly what you want in there, and that's, and I think that that whatever Mike said here about taking out that paragraph and, and 214 and, and clarifying that so that follows stay law, if that's where you are.
Well, I'll make that motion, however, we start this multi-step process to eliminate that first paragraph of the section 104 and then 214.
Section 315, first paragraph of 214, right? Or 340, 104. 314 and then 214 is completely eliminated. And it'll renumber as 104 to go back into, or we'll, we'll have to put a new number on it?
No, the number is still the same. The 104 was still.
Okay, the same, okay.
You're just removing that, that one paragraph.
And make it in compliance with state.
So you need a second motion of that? Did I make that motion?
That's a motion, I'll have to read it three times, right?
Eliminate the first paragraph of 314.
Yeah.
Is that how you want the motion stated? First, to eliminate the first paragraph of 314?
Yeah, or you can almost put a parentheses, section 104, because that's what, 314 was the ordinance that, that approved the changes to 104. Does that make sense?
Yes.
And then you would have the repealing of section 114, which is ordinance 315.
Well, I'll second that motion and probably.
Okay, so motion by Bob to rewrite the 104, and seconded by Larry, and we'll start with Isla.
I refrain from voting.
Bob?
Oh, we gotta, no, we gotta do it three times and then go?
Well, you have to.
Three steps.
You got three steps. You have to then, so it's then introduced, okay? You're now. So then what you have to do is have a motion to suspend the rules.
Okay, then I need a motion to suspend the rules.
We should do the vote on the first one.
No, you have to suspend the rules.
I made a motion to suspend the rules.
Motion by Larry, suspend the rules, and seconded. Motion by Larry, suspend the rules, and seconded by Bob.
Yeah, then you have to have...
Vote for that, that we vote for.
Yes, on the...
Ila?
Ira Frain.
Bob?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
And Larry?
Yes.
Okay, now the motion for the changing of the ordinance, right?
You have to then, you then have to have a, what you're saying then is you want an ordinance for the city of Crofton to remove the first paragraph of 104 and to delete section 114.
That's a second reading, basically.
That's a basic second reading. And then the third reading is to say the same thing, an ordinance of the city of Crofton, County of Nebraska, to delete the first paragraph of 104 and section 114 of the code. And that'd be the third time. And then you have a motion for final passage.
So let's make the motion for final passage.
I'll make that motion.
James, motion for final passage, rewrite the 104. Seconded by Bob, and start with Bob.
Is there a comment period?
Yeah.
I'm not confused. I know exactly what's happening, but I've not seen it done this way before. Okay, so we're, are we introducing an ordinance or directing the city attorney to write an ordinance? You're passing an ordinance you don't have and you haven't seen?
All in one.
You're passing an ordinance that you don't have and you haven't seen, though?
You don't have, front of them, you don't know what, but...
And then the suspension of the rules is the idea that you're going to eliminate the second and third readings, which we previously did before the motion was made to approve the ordinance. And now we're doing after the motion.
Right, suspend the reading, it's something that we can't read because we don't have it anyway, basically.
I'm not trying to be difficult, I'm trying to be clear. Just so everybody's aware. So we don't have an ordinance that we're passing that will be presented at the next meeting?
Yep. That's correct.
And it'll be published by the 15 days there?
Right.
After the next meeting or after this meeting?
After this meeting.
So you're gonna take their instruction and write an ordinance that's in effect and deliver it to the journal at some point, and we'll publish it?
Right.
That they've never seen.
Well, I don't think it's so hard to figure out what it is, right?
Okay.
They've seen it in pieces, because they've seen it. You know, they're taking out this paragraph and this paragraph.
It's not adding anything, it's just deleting.
And the big thing is, it's getting back to what the state basically says for the, for that ordinance. Just speeds it up, I guess.
Your meeting?
Whoever it is.
Motion for final passage.
Final passage, and that was made, we got those, the motion and the second is done. Do you have the second?
Who made the motion?
I did.
James made the motion, I think he made it then. So we'll start with Bob.
Yes.
James?
Yes.
Larry?
Yes.
And I.
Ira Frain.
Okay. So that carries, so our attorney will be working on that, sending it to us.
And I'm gonna read something out of that section. "For mayor's duties, the mayor shall preside over all meetings of the city council and may vote when his or her vote shall be decisive in any pending matter, legislation or transaction. And the mayor shall, for the purpose of such vote, be deemed to be a member of the council. His or her signature must appear on all clerk's minutes and all meetings. He or she must sign all resolutions to be passed or warrants and payments of money." That is your duty, to oversee the meetings, that's it. That is it.
What?
That is your job, to oversee the meetings. That is your title, right here, in black and white.
What are you telling me?
Not to be in the books, not be in clerk books, not be in the office. Your job is to oversee the meetings.
Mike has come in. I'm not gonna answer that. I sure can't sign all the checks if I'm never there.
You can come in once a week for an hour.
Okay.
Well, I don't know that I would agree with that interpretation, whether she can be in the office or not.
That's fine, but her, it stays, this is her, this is her job, is to oversee the meetings.
What is the first paragraph, her first flying thing?
She'll preside at all meetings of the city council. May vote when his or her vote is self-decisive in any pending matter, legislation or transaction. And the mayor shall, for the purpose of such vote, be deemed a member of the council.
Okay.
Your job is to oversee the meetings.
Is there anything else, is there no other, is that what this is all about? Just the mayor's job?
No.
So who, is that all that's in that ordinance then? Is that all you wanted in there?
The big piece of that ordinance that we're taking out was giving you total control of the town.
But that's not all the ordinance, James.
That's the mayor, it says right here, mayor's duties, it says in black and white.
Well, not all of the mayor's duties are in that one section.
No, I'm sure they're not, but I don't know if they'd be in our books. I just read the auditor, talked to the auditor today, and we have got so many issues in our office.
Really?
What's that?
You tell me, what are the big issues then? Because I do not...
We have no, we have no accountability, or no, we have no, no checks and balance in the office. Even states that write in the audit.
Said it that way for three or four years.
And it shouldn't be that way, and that's what they keep saying. You guys keep doing the same thing over and over. So we keep telling you not to do it.
And that's why we separated the clerk and the treasurer's trial.
Obviously, it didn't get through this audit this year because it says the same thing, the same thing.
Because that was a year ago's audit, we just changed it. We need to talk about an audit with a different topic, but that's... You're, we're still throwing everything in here now. Let's listen to what Mike has to say, please.
Well, I'm not sure what the question is.
I'm just saying, what it says here, to be in black and white, is to oversee the...
He wants to bar me from the office, and he wants to bar me from the office.
No, I'm not barring you from the office, but it's a city office where city work needs to be done.
So?
What do you have to do with that?
I do city work.
Like what? It's a legitimate question, what are you doing there?
Okay.
The treasurer we hired should be doing the books and the balances.
Okay, all you guys are talking about right now is the money aspect. Would you agree to that? That's what you're upset about?
The thing is, Cheryl, I have not seen where we are sitting with the budget that we have, that was screwed up when we sent it. We, you said, you showed us four sheets of paper. When I was on council, Arlene was there, I was there, and so was Donovan. Four sheets of paper, and you got sent in 15 pages to the State of Nebraska. We never even got to see them until they come back. And I seen them online, so I pulled them off and looked at it. When we passed it that night, we both passed the mill levy, not the audit.
Not the back, not the back, you're getting the audit, right?
We did pass, we did pass that because he gave us four sheets, and you were mad because the computer crashed that night. And that's what you told us.
Right.
And you sent some, because you were on a deadline, you sent down to Lincoln. And I look at it, and I thought, "Where did these 15 pages come from?" I only seen four. I only had four in my folder. And we don't even know, I don't even know where the council, our eyesight, as how much money we're spending and how much we're behind. You never showed us on anything that you got.
I know, we were gonna have financial meeting, remember? Nobody could make it.
You can't run a town if you don't know how much money you're spending.
You know how much we're spending, it's in every, every report.
Yeah, but those reports aren't up to date.
Yes, they are.
No, they're not.
Okay. Didn't beat them, you commanded to beat the treasurer.
The clerk books aren't closing and not up to date.
They are up to date. The only thing that closing does is move the fund balances.
Right, moves the fund balance over against the next one, against the next one, against the next one.
Into the equity account. All you have to do is look at your profit margin, the same figure that you moved into the equity.
Is there Mr. Stevens, another?
There, you know, I've gotta say this, because if you really wanted to know any of this, you could come into the office at any time.
I have come into the office, and it ends up in the paper.
No, you walk in, start cussing me out about something.
It comes up in the paper with your version and nobody else's. It ends up in the paper all the time.
You've never asked me about the books, all you do is come in and cuss me out.
I don't come in and cuss you out. I haven't come in and cussed you out. I come in to have a conversation, and it ends up in the paper. So all the conversations are gonna end right here.
Okay, here's the deal.
Here's the deal.
My job is to be the day-to-day handler of the business of the city. If you wanna strip me of that, that's fine, but that's where we've been. In the, over the weekend, on a Sunday, the Sunday I tried to take off, I talked to three people about land for the sewer. I talked to two or three people about behind water bills. I talked to a couple of them about property that needs cleaned out. They called, they come into the house. This is part of running the city, whether you want to agree to that or not.
But none of that is ever brought to our attention. Now, one thing that you just mentioned was brought to our attention, that's the ordinance.
You never ask?
We shouldn't have to ask you if people call you.
Okay. So I need to report to you every phone call, I guess, is that right?
It should be noted, yes.
Well, that's not true. That's not, that's not your job. Let's read your job description.
Go ahead.
Okay, do you have that, Mike?
Uh, yes, this is 109. "The council should have all power to grant or in laws of the state of Nebraska, including but not limited to the following. Power to pass ordinances to prevent or remove nuisances, to prevent, restrain, and suppress gambling. Disorderly houses, to license or regulate amusements, to establish and provide for police protection, to prevent the spread of contagious disease. To regulate business, to erect, repair, construct, and regulate public ways and property, to maintain good government, public welfare, and domestic tranquility. And to enforce all ordinances by inflicting penalties upon inhabitants or other persons for violation thereof, not exceeding the amount permitted by law for each offense, recover with cost, together with enforcement by injunction where necessary."
So basically, what you just said, you got calls for, should be brought to our attention.
So what, the way I interpret that is that you make the laws that keeps people safe. You decide where the money is spent. No bill is ever paid without your approval, never. Okay?
That's how I interpreted it.
So, so where do we go from there?
So if somebody calls you about nuisance property, you don't think we should be aware of that?
Well, we have an ordinance about that, and we turn that over to our law enforcement. And there is a process and a procedure that he follows. And if nothing gets done, why part come to you? But as long as it gets worked out, something, some movement gets made, we depend on our law enforcement. One thing that you guys should not be doing is going and telling him how to enforce the law. You can write the law, but he needs to enforce it.
I haven't said anything, nobody.
One thing, another thing you should not be doing is going and stopping the maintenance men and telling them how to do something differently when you are, when they have been doing it and they're, they're in control of what they're doing. They're the trained people with sewer and water, so they don't need you telling them how. And I'm just saying that, I'm not saying whether you did or not. I'm just saying that's something we don't need. Everybody's got their own job, okay?
Can I say something?
Sure.
I had called over the whole building, I've called over their prime times, and I talked to Colette Panning, and the dietician representative, she's said that time. And she's the city clerk.
Right.
She's the one that answered all the questions.
Now, she's also the administrator.
And so, what did I not, Arlene?
She's also the administrator.
But still, she's the city clerk.
She's also the administrator. She has the power of administrator.
I said, "How often is your mayor in your office?"
Never.
Not at all, not at all.
I said, "How often do you contact your mayor?"
Never.
Maybe once a month, if I need to.
Okay.
I'm tired.
It's not, oh, 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 oh.
I am tired.
Yeah.
He can raise her. I, then I said, "I'm tired." He wants to answer me, sure, he can, but I got the guy.
Anaphniki. I'm saying what, let me answer your question. She is an administrator, which gives her a lot of the powers that... We don't know exactly what they're saying. But the administrator, if you go to the state level, says that an administrator takes on the duties of the mayor. They work at the direction of the mayor and the council. Now, if you hire a manager, the manager actually takes on all the duties of the mayor, and the mayor has no say-so whatsoever. But a manager is illegal in a city or size. So it has to be an administrator, which means that they still work under the auspices of the mayor and the council. They are hired to do partly clerical and partly administrative work. So the administrative parts that they do are what the mayor is an administrator. Pure and simple. Now, if, you know, I guess this has to come, you know, but it just seems to me like that, that we should be looking at how we can make things better together, rather than who's the boss. What about, who have I hurt by being in here doing the work?
Who have you hurt?
Yes, who have I hurt?
By being in the office?
Yeah.
You want to go to executive session, I love to talk about it.
I don't work for you, James, that's what you can't get under.
Obviously, you work for these people out here.
Well, I don't work for you.
You work for me as a citizen, not as a board member.
Cheryl, I got something. You said the workers, they know what they're doing. And I agree. And Nikki, I'm gonna ask you a question. I got a memo or an email from you, 'cause I was on the pool committee. Do you remember what it was said about when you asked one of the workers about the pool?
Yeah.
Well, I'm gonna read some of it here. And I'm not, I'm getting your permission first.
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay, this is, this is Nikki asking Mr. Hopestein about the pool. "I talked to Pat today, and he mentioned that it'll take four or five days to fill the pool because NRD is limiting water, because PPL are using a lot of water, and if Crofton goes over its allowance, then it will cost the city a lot." Now, I've been here 64 years, I've never, ever seen, and then we got the groundwater, and we've never seen that NRD say such thing.
Okay, I'm not sure that...
Mr. Hopestein?
Mr. Hopestein? Larry, maybe, let me answer that you asked me. As far as it costing the city, I don't know what that reference was, but we're only allowed so many gallons a day. And right now, they're concerned right now because it can't keep the level up. Everybody's watering their lawns.
This is the council, this is...
Give me, everybody's watering their lawns. The elevator started using a lot of water for sprays. The city gets X amount of gallons per day from the groundwater. We, we've been, they've been pumping, according to what they were telling. I'm not gonna try to give the numbers, 'cause I don't remember them. But we're not even reaching that because we can't get to it. They don't have pressure. They also have a leak out there, which dropped the pressure. I don't know where the records to money came from, but we just can't get the water without having people out of the water. So we're not gonna do that.
It's kind of embarrassing when people off the street, and there's other people on this pool committee, ask me, "What do you, what does the council know about this?" And I don't know anything about that.
Well, Larry, you're not really on the pool committee to run our current pool. You were on the pool committee to fill out a new pool. That kind of committee has nothing to do with running our current pool. I'm sorry, but that's the way it is. Our guys run that pool for you. Your job is to get the ideas from, for the community new pool, not to dictate how this pool was run.
And tell me, you people come up to me and ask me, "Is there a danger of losing our water from the NRD?" Because they read this and they asked me.
Well, you shouldn't have been showing it.
Larry, you and I talked last week. How many days is it gonna take to fill this pool?
All depends on how much water you use to do that.
Am I telling this wrong, guys, you wanna take over?
No. I called again today, they had runs out there last weekend, plus the pipeline, it's been a long one.
Out of the, out of the well? Out of the well, yep.
And I was lucky enough, the road was at three inches, the road was low.
Okay.
They shut it down, and we're still fighting. They shut it down, and we're still fighting it today.
Okay.
You know, I do... I'm on it, because a lot of water I use...
Yep.
Because I'm gonna stay back while I hold it.
Does it feel more night or during the day, or does it matter?
Well, the elevator makes it feel tonight. But there's a lot of water that moves on nights.
Yeah.
Okay, the post was done, right? And so a lot of that will...
Thank you.
Hopefully. Yes?
I talked to a guy from Cedar Knox this afternoon. He talked us off about our place. And he was up there working on that. And he was looking at this thing over, and he said, the reason we... Yes, they have a pump that went down and sucks the water from the lake into their tank. They had an auxiliary pump that they kicked in, and that kicks in with the van, and that plus their suction deal, so they had to fix that within a week. So now they've got everything going. And he was up there looking at... On the end of my lot, where it transfers the water into the town. And he said, the valve has been adjusted wrong. I adjusted it now so the town gets more water. That comes from the superintendent himself to me.
Good. That's what I just said, Larry just said he talked to him, and they're working on it, so. Good? No arguments? Are we finished with 314? Have we finished that, Mike? Did we complete that? So you can go ahead and write it? We're done, right? We've had motions, we've done everything we need?
Thank you, done everything you need. I think you have to remember that prior to what you did today, that there's a line of demarcation, so to speak, from this standpoint. Up until what you did today, when you no longer had a city administrator, you know, the language of your ordinance provided that the mayor took over those responsibilities, which, you know, with your city administrator, I mean, they ran the place.
Right.
You know? And so up until that time, all the things that have occurred as far as phone calls and those type of things, that would have been on that side of the line. So now you're doing something completely different. And so some of the issues that have been brought up today, that would be the explanation as to why those things are done. I'm not trying to, you know, be one side or another, I'm just telling you that's how that part of it is. So when you do this, you know, then you're left with all your other ordinances that has, you know, very specific language as to what the duties that everybody gets. And so I think that's one of the things that by switching back to the way it is, some of these people need to look at what their... What the definition and description of what their duties are in that regard. Now, whether or not, I mean, I did a quick look to try to see, you know, who can come into office and who can't come into office. I don't see necessarily anything in that from that standpoint. But I'll have something to you first thing in the morning as far as what we've done tonight.
Thank you.
As far as I know, we're done with 314.
Okay.
Mayor?
I'd like to...
Has there been any work on the... I still don't know, I asked for a code book a couple of months ago, just to check one out. Is there still just the one? Is that what we're dealing with?
Yeah, I don't know, there were five or six in there.
And it's that one?
Yeah.
Because the ordinances aren't all listed online. Some of them are, but they're not in the order.
Arlene's been putting on.
No, I, no, there's always been some on the website, just for reference or for...
The new website.
For people to be able to look up. They don't have the ability to look up what they're supposed to do if they don't have a code book, so. Yeah, it's kind of hard, because it's... It's really a jumbled mess. From my... Look at it. You've got this one that most of your communities have. Right. And then what you've had happen is you have this, which is the changes and additions and modifications of it. So you almost have to look... At both. At least I've had a look at two different places to try and figure out kind of where it's at. Right.
They definitely need to have... Definitely, yeah. Recapify, would you agree to that, Mike?
Yeah, we need to bring them up to defense. So you have all the one deal, so that each member of the council has one that they can just turn to right away and say, well, this is what it is.
Okay, if there's nothing further there, we'll go back to the agenda of the well for me after Crofton Community School. Can I have a... Can we move through this? I don't think there's probably any objections to... The school wants to put a well so they can water the football field and stuff out there.
I'll make a motion to approve it.
Second by Bob. James?
Yes.
Larry?
Yes.
I love...
Yes, Bob.
Yes.
The Cruisin' Day Car Show. Is anybody here that wants to talk?
No, she said to me they just want to close the street like the governor passed.
Okay. I don't think we even needed a motion, but we can do that.
I'll make a motion to close the street during that day.
Okay.
I'll second it.
For the usual of the Cruisin' Day, the next by the community council. So motion by James, second by Larry. We'll start with Larry.
Yes.
Island?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
Oh, Bob and James. Okay. Bob?
Yes.
And James?
Yes.
We need a liquor license approval for the American Legion, August 21st. Is that a wedding gas?
Um, I think so.
I think that's a wedding gas, secondly.
He didn't really say, but...
Yeah, I think it was. Anyway, we just kind of always approve these, so. Motion?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Motion by Bob?
I'll second it.
Second by James for approval of American Legion liquor license for August 21st, 2021, and most of Starboard Island.
Yes.
And Bob?
Yes.
And James?
Yes.
And Larry? The subdivision ordinances. Mike, do you want to say anything more? We've had these for quite a while, just haven't got to them to approve them.
I don't think I understand them.
Is that in that packet?
Should they have written that? They printed all this stuff up, but I don't think you see it.
They've been working on this for a long time.
We've worked on the planning, zoning commissions worked on the subdivision ordinances for probably a couple of years off and on. We've had them ready to work on as far as your ability to work with them, probably for three or four months here. Presently, they're in your hand, and we shortened them up some from the former document, getting rid of excess words. They've been reviewed, as you've noted in my sheet that I sent to you. They've been reviewed by a former city lawyer. They've been looked over by a surveyor, looked over by... Not sure what else we need to say about them. Generally, they were acceptable. I'm going to say they're probably not perfect. Just as any document that you work with probably has some imperfections. Good enough. Any questions you have, I'll try to answer.
Very good. Very good, I read it.
We tried to take the extra verbiage.
Very, very professional.
Did you... Mr. Stevens, no immediate red flags from what you said?
I didn't see him, your prior attorney. He looked through it, and particularly began everybody else. You know, with these zoning things, you only find out if there's an issue when a person comes up with something.
Like last week, Mike?
There's so much content there, it's a little confusing. We tried, we did our best.
I would not have an issue with this.
Thank you. Mike, thanks for your work and the rest of your committee as well. So I would entertain a motion to approve those subdivision ordinances.
I'll make a motion to approve the land subdivision ordinance updated 10/24/2021.
Okay, now we just, we have that, this subdivision ordinance. Mike, can we actually write an ordinance?
Yeah, we should adopt an ordinance to approve it.
Yes. So do you want to write an ordinance?
Yeah, I need that back then. Or can you just send that?
Yeah, I'm just...
So we'll have Mike write up an ordinance. But we have, can we go ahead and approve that? Or will we have to visit again?
You're gonna have to approve it at the time of the ordinance.
Okay, so we'll visit that again, we've got on the way. Okay, Mike? Joe Jensen could not be here tonight. His exif sat in front of us, he has his bucket that he pulled some water. He's fighting bad water at his house. Nobody else around him has it. Everybody's baffled by it. So we're trying to figure out what's going on. Haley?
My water is yellow consistently, everyone. So just not to...
Right, right. Is it yellow or is it dirty?
Well, not dirty, it's yellow.
Yeah, see, and he's got the shovels back there.
Did we flush the pipe?
Okay.
Did we flush the pipe last week or the week before? Are you seeing this rusty water?
Yeah, I don't understand. All the neighbors around me are pissed with the rust in their water. I don't know what's going on.
Okay, I do have a letter from Joe that he asked us to read, so I'll just read it. He says, "I'm sorry that I'm not here in person, however, I had a chance to see your grandson play baseball by leaving earlier, so this narrative will have to do." And he came in this afternoon. "We've been fighting groundwater for months. My wife did call and have messages to the city office. Arlene acknowledged receiving it. On June 1st, I took a pail of water from the city office that I collected after the water heater had been flushed twice. Complete turnover of the water. The mayor was not in, but the ladies agreed that they would not like to wash their eyes, whites, or care to bathe in that water. I was told at that time that they would talk to Boomer about it. There was no response, so I called a day or so later and talked with the mayor. I asked for someone to explain to me how the dirt, sand, and brown water got into my house. We have replumbed the entire house a couple of years ago, replaced our line from the city main. Immediately, the mayor placed blame..." I'm not reading this for the first time, so. "Immediately, the mayor placed blame on the CKRWP, since that is the water source. Having served on the board of directors on that project for 36 years, I know that the project uses a line-stopping process which removes the iron, manganese, and other elements that contribute to hard water. Cedar Knox delivers the water at 6 to 8 grains of hardness, so that's not going to fly. If it was the water source, as the mayor stated, then everyone in town would have a problem." And I have to stop here, because he totally misunderstood me at that point. I said, "There's manganese in the water here, we know that. We know it discolored water." I wasn't blaming anybody. Something had to be done there. Was the flushing completely correct? Completed correctly? Was the flushing time adequate to remove the foreign matter and pipes? We had to replace the water heater because we could not flush long enough to remove the jump. All that I'm asking you to consider is some participation in the cost of the replacement and some credit toward the water used to flush and double rinse the laundry. If you care to check out water usage, since the first of the year, we've used 51, 157, etc. 69 and 83, the last month, have increased by 8,800 to 1,700. It's a lot of water for two people. You would think that someone in the water department would have looked at that increase and at least called to see if there was a reason that huge increase didn't happen. You do what you think is right. So obviously, you know, there's some issues there. I think that what I did say was that we probably could not help people play water and flushing and so forth if we didn't find that was our problem. I need to say that the guys have dug up the main up there. They've been in, they've been down to the curb stop. They've done everything they can to find out. There's a break in the line. Seems to be everything's fine up to that curb stop. That's as far as the city is responsible. I am not, you know... I don't know the answer. We continue to look. We know that there are some pipes probably that are bad, that they might... And I know that everybody's gonna just have to fit. I say this, but I'm gonna say it anyway. When I moved to town, I replaced every pipe in the house. And I very seldom have anything in my water. Very seldom. Once in a while, when they flush.
Boomer, is that a cast pipe or is that a plastic pipe going from the curb stop into his house?
That's a black PVC.
It's a black poly? Is it black poly?
Yeah.
So we'll continue to work with Joe, and Joe will continue to work with us. But if any of you board members have an answer, let us know. We're like Joe now. Okay, so let's...
Is there anybody that Boomer sends this water sample in that...
Always, every day or every... How often is it tested?
I don't know, very much.
Let me...
Not every test.
Let me finish.
Okay.
Not every test.
True, go ahead.
Is there any that he sends this water stuff in? There should be some kind of a genius or an expert, and we need to dig in their office that he sends it. You want to keep asking or have them come up and witness this. Maybe it can give us some... Calm down these homeowners, knowing that we're going to the next yard and getting people from Lincoln or wherever we send this to down here and going there, house, and see what's happening. Maybe they have an answer we ain't looking at.
Andy, is your water yellow every day?
Every day. But my question is, when we're talking about the sample, it's just for a few hours, you say. Where does the sample come from? Is it a varied sample, or is it always the same?
The sample comes from a spot that the state determines is the right spot.
So they like...
Usually it's on a median or something.
It changes.
Very much, because that's where it all came in.
So that's what I was asking, is always the same?
Yeah, it's taken from, you know, neighborhood, part of the town.
It changes. Haley, right?
We got, what is it, seven spots we got to get samples from. And it's all... But we got the same thing from the same place every time. You know, we're only going to the same segment, they won't let us swing. And we'll do about that much favor.
Okay.
I got another question for you, Boomer, in that house. And I called George Rifeinrod House, I think it's Kathy Waits. Does that still have water in the basement yet?
Who's that house?
Pardon?
Would you say?
Is that house that George Rifeinrod lived in, that Kathy Waits owns that, where it's... Does there water in that basement?
I don't know.
If there's water in that basement, maybe there's some stuff that's backflushing, just seeping back into our lines. I don't know, I know there was water in there.
It's all pressure, because you guys have, you know, it's a beach. It's 25 miles of pressure, I believe, 20 years up. Maybe they have that down there.
Well, I'm just guessing, because I know that house had water in it. I don't know if anybody ever pumped it out and got it cleaned out. Maybe it's coming into our lines slowly, we don't know.
Well, because it's something that's coming out, too. You don't want to be...
Well... I'm just looking for ideas. Can you ask Kathy Waits to go on here and see what's in there?
I've been in there every time.
Is there water in the basement?
Are you talking about leaking in or coming into the pipes?
I don't, one time, I heard, she's part of my relation, her dad said that was wrong. And they had water in the basement, and then he died and she died. I don't know if anybody got the water out, because they said that house is just the same way when he died. So I don't know what's happened.
That, that house, that water's gone down.
Well, I'm just. We gotta wait until somebody's.
They just say it's shut off.
I was in the basement, there wasn't water standing in the basement.
Yeah. No water.
But there wasn't water standing in the basement at all. So can we check this? Do the other neighbors directly, like Patrick is a neighbor, do they have any issues whatsoever? Or is just?
Patrick, none, we know of.
Joe specifically?
Yeah, we know of.
Because Pat, you notice no issue with?
Patrick's right there.
No, I never, I think we have eventually.
And I think somebody talked to Brian and Debbie and they said, "No." Okay.
What is Herman Allen? Got any problems with their water?
Not that it hurts, I'm not here to see.
What about that guy that lives right, right on the north side of Joe Jensen and that tree over there?
Right.
Well, yeah. You know, when Brad Strunk is down on that next line, that crosses down to my block.
Right. You don't have any issue?
Well, I got, I got some, water used to be clean and now it's dirty, but I just thought maybe it's coming from flushing fire irons. So my water is not as clear as it used to be, but it ain't as dirty as that. So I don't know. Maybe, maybe it's just that line down there. I don't know where they run. But you need to probably talk to each one of those people and run a test and send it in and see actually what's in it.
Okay, the group at the auditorium is up next. Is Brad here?
Yep.
There he is. And is Casey, somebody representative of Casey here? Brad, if you want to go, go, you present, can we do that, and if he comes later, we can, we just move on? Or do you want to wait and see them both same time?
I'd wait a few minutes.
Okay, let's, let's jump ahead, if you don't mind, we reschedule. Wendy, would you like to have something to say?
Um, yeah, I would just kind of refer your attention that there's been hundreds of volunteers working from 7:00 AM to 7:00 AM, 11 o'clock at night down at ball fields. We currently are hosting four tournaments in Crofton, which is a huge deal because we haven't had a tournament for girls for quite a while. So I just wanted to make you aware of June 19th, there will be a boys. Nope. June 18th, the six and eight boys tournament will be in Crofton. June 19th, the eight underers tournament will be in Crofton, and that will bring eight teams to town. The boys will be, have nine games. June 26th, the 10 and unders tournament will be here with nine teams. And the 18 and unders will be here June 27th with six teams. So I'm here to ask the city if it would be all possible if we could contact, I've contacted Arts Garbage about getting a dumpster, because on one night of games, all of our garbages are overflowing. I'm worried a tournament on the Friday night and Saturday, and then the following Saturday, Sunday, we're gonna have garbage all over the place.
Yep.
They said, I thought she said a four yard dumpster would cost $101.
That's fine.
Every time they dump it. So she figured they dump it each weekend.
We had one put on the baseball field for their tournament.
So if that's something possible. And then as well as, we can get some extra picnic tables from the shelter, the park shelters or something.
Boomer, are there any of those out there left?
No.
The old ones?
The, the school had some from COVID when they had their lunch.
Yes.
And they brought it to the ball fields, and then they disappeared from the ball fields. So did you guys come to come?
Actually, one of the ones that we had, the barbecue, the refrigeration, they borrowed around 10 o'clock or 12.
We did grab some, but they're not in better shape than the ones we have. But the ones the school had out in front of the high school were in great shape, and they delivered them to.
They probably went back to the park.
So are those something we can go get for the weekend?
Did they go back to the park, Boomer?
Yeah.
Okay.
I see a little bit of wine up.
Well, there's only about four or five of them, but that, that put them, right? That put them in that shelter?
Eight, eight to eleven.
Oh, okay. Oh, yeah, because they had some around behind too, yeah.
Historically, we have. We went and borrowed them.
Yeah.
And brought them back, yeah.
Anybody got a problem with that?
No.
Okay.
And so is it okay for me to contact Arts Garbage and have them send a bill to you?
Yes.
Or you can take care of getting them?
Yes, unless you want me to call them, I call them for the baseball.
It doesn't matter. She just said you need to know right away.
Yeah, take care of it if you want to.
Does one down the baseball field stay there all summer?
Probably not. We had it come in, because, well, I guess we talked about that, but we just brought it in for that tournament because they were having, they figured that they had.
So it ain't down there when the Moosades play or the Ponies is not there?
They usually get by with just the barrels.
The hamper then?
Larry, they have barrels and stuff there, and our guys pick up the garbage. But the, for our purposes, our maintenance guys would have to go down there three or four times a day on the weekend to get it up, so we just got a dumpster.
Sure, I'm not arguing that point, but I'm asking you, is it down there during the summer months?
No, just, we just, that's why I just explained, just for the tournament, because the guys pick them up during J.
As long as we know ahead, when the Little League has their tournaments, we'll do the same thing.
Yeah.
So, yeah, so we're looking at June 18th, 19th, and then January 6th, 7th. And we've asked the school for permission to park in the high school parking lot, as well as.
Done by that, practice field down there, that's fine in that park, they've done that for years.
And they're doing their games in that north part of the softball field.
Just on that, boys and girls.
Did you, didn't we decide, are you gonna call Arts or do you want us to?
I will call them tomorrow.
Okay.
All right, thank you. And if anybody's available to help work any of those tournaments, we can get a signup list.
Get your list out, and sign up, Wendy. We have a fee schedule we can look at, it's in your packet. These are, some of them are old fees that you might want to change. It's gonna have published this at some time, I'm not sure when, but we need to get this up to date. We're talking about budget coming up, so we need to think about all those incomes and expenses.
I have a question on that.
Yep.
Do we rent out the tables and chairs?
Yes, we do.
In the building?
Yes.
Why? I get three calls the last time they get rented out, three complaints. They came back late, they came back dirty.
We have not had a problem with them, James.
That was last.
At the graduation weekend, the, when they brought them back, I asked everybody to just bring them in and lay them on the floor because they were gonna set them up the next day or something, and they wouldn't have to bring them out. Some of the ladies that didn't wipe them down, they thought they probably brought them in a pickup and maybe had some kind of type of stuff on them. That's the only complaint we had.
Pardon?
It's all come from that one.
What?
Good to the community, it's outraged, they, any problems with that that I can say, we've seen nothing. It's open. Those of us doing the maintenance in here and the cleaning up do not feel that's a problem.
I need some for graduation and S A P for being able to use the tables and chairs for graduation.
And any what?
We were able to use for at least the graduation this year, the tables and chairs.
Right.
And that saving, being able to just come down here and get the tables and chairs. And Cheryl might be down here today after graduation to bring them back.
On a Sunday, when the mayor's not supposed to be working.
And then, yeah, they pick them up on Thursday, and so I mean, obviously, that was a good thing to help.
Yes.
I worked the funeral the day after. We had a couple kids that were all, and they were dirty. And they were something more banging, 30 bang, the corners were banged, and somebody had said that they had done new tables when Charlie was here, and they were, they were not supposed to leave the other morning.
Well.
So I have all.
Yeah, thank you. Boomer? They're, they're right there, go examine them, if they're, they're not hurt. Boomer, were those bought when Charlie was here?
Yeah.
Okay.
There's some of them, they're in trouble, the shrews coming out on the fringe on the front page.
And they're not expensive tables, but they're.
We covered all of the plastics, so they're in there.
Yeah, and most people do anyway, if they have something fancy. Dr. Shazer had them all to his thing down there and just brought them back, what, yesterday?
Today.
Today. That was worth what?
Ninety.
Ninety bucks we made just to help out a little bit around here, so, you know, we helped the community. Ninety bucks will pay for a table if one of them gets broken up, so I don't have a problem with it.
Do you not have the abonance that they should come back through and owe you your deposit back? Or you just charge them so much for a table?
We just charge.
It's $90, it's only gonna buy you a couple tables.
I understand that, understand that.
Wherever I have the deposit, they don't even cash the check or something, they hold the deposit check.
Well, we can't hold money in the office according to the auditor. Don't. Then we're writing checks back for dollars and two.
I got a question on the late fees on the water, it's only a child's.
Yep, that's what it is now. This is what you're, this is what, if you want something changed now, that's what we're here for.
That's okay.
My next question is, how are we doing on the Lincoln bills?
Lots of country.
COVID's over now.
Yep, and they got the letter.
I think we need to probably go on executive and talk about what we have out that we had out before the COVID started, where we're sitting and where we're gonna try to catch up someplace. And I think we need to do that executive session to figure out how much we're still got out there, how much people are not paying up to date.
We can do that next time if you want.
Well, I'll put it, I want it, because.
Well, let's, let's put it.
That late fee needs to be higher, because $5 is nothing. People don't care if they paid or not, so they have to pay $5. So make it hurt a little bit.
A monthly fee of $5 every time you're late here, $5 are.
We talked about that a year ago. I said make it $10, $15, but you know what? Some of them, that, that, somebody pointed out to me that a good share of the time, the ones that have problems are just gonna have more problems when you add 15. Same way with the, with the heavy hookup fee. Just to answer your question, we had a lot of people that did not pay during COVID. We know for a fact, of course, that whenever you're not charging late and you're not going after shutting off water, that you're gonna have some people take advantage of that. If you're, since you are all water users, you got my letter that said that COVID's over and we'll start, because that went out in every letter. The next letter that went out, went out to individuals who were behind, and since that letter's come out, we're probably taking in what, a couple grand? Two. So they're paying, so.
So we still have some on the books that ain't paid, correct?
We probably have some, but they're paying. We've got most of them. The letter that went out said to take a, make arrangements to pay, contact us. We probably got two or people on the list that haven't contacted us.
So.
The plan is, is that if we hear nothing, the water goes off on the tent, that's the law.
So I got another question on this, the next one down is the ATVs. Now, I know what an ATV is, but I'm seeing, I call them doom buggies driving around town. Some don't have flags. 11 o'clock at night, they're going around the streets, no headlights, no taillights.
Are you talking about the side by side?
The, I don't know who's driving it.
No, I'm talking about the vehicles, the two persons side by side or not, is that what you're talking about?
Yeah, they're, they're doom buggies.
Okay, they have to be registered as well, so.
Should they, shouldn't they have lights on the front?
Sure.
Should they have taillights on the mirror? And I know that some of them don't.
Well.
I see them driving in the dark down the streets, and the streetlights are lit.
We'll hope Jonathan gets it.
Pardon?
I said, we'll hope Jonathan gets it. I can't enforce the law.
And as we need to, we need to put in here that the doom buggy license or is it in our codes? We don't, on ATVs, they've got a flag, it's $25.
That's what this is for, sir, the ATV and side by sides, and Jonathan asked about golf carts. So where do we want to put all of them in there? Where do they have to be registered? They're not supposed to be driven in the dark at all.
Well, these ain't grownups doing. Well, of course, I don't think so.
That's what exactly, we would assume that, but who knows? I haven't, I haven't been out there.
Well, I, I sit in my house and I look down the streets and I see them.
Run them down. Tell them, get off the street.
Run them down, and I just.
Okay, but we're doing, you know, we're, we're asking about what's the fee that we should be charging them to register. Here's the deal, if we register them, we know who owns them. Then our cop has a better chance going up and talking.
$25 straight apart, golf carts, side by sides.
Do you want the golf carts even to be allowed?
Well, not really, but people got it, what do you have to do?
Sure.
Well, you can ban them.
You know, just charging them $25, they're not hurting anything. They just don't go through that, but they're just a danger of, if you come up on one, don't have lights on.
I think our ordinance said they cannot be ridden at night. Any of these?
Sorry.
And that they are all supposed to have headlights on, even in the daytime. Jonathan, am I right on that hypothetical one?
I do have a call that has headlights, but all those vehicles are during their daylight hours only.
Yeah, and, and, and we, they're supposed to be licensed. I mean, not the vehicle, but the people driving them. I believe that's in our ordinance, is that correct?
That's correct.
So we shouldn't have kids who are not licensed driving. So there, here's the thing, if, if they get caught, then Jonathan can give them that appropriate ticket and they can pay fine. Or whatever. We just want to know what you want to make for a registration fee. We're charging 20, is it 25? 25 for the four wheelers, so the, or the ATVs, four wheeler. And, and there's a group comes in all the time, the school's got one, I don't, a lot of people have them, they come in, they pay the fee, we know where they are, you know.
I think we should put $25 registration fee for every one of those.
On the side by side, and you're, and you're willing to let golf carts.
And have the headlight, they got a headlight on, policeman's got a check, and they should have lights.
Well, James, did you say, yeah, you want the?
Throw them all in there.
Golf cart too?
Just throw it all in there. It's easier that way, then we don't have to worry about it.
Okay. Anything else on the speed schedule? If you put this together, then we bring it back to you. Pardon? The camping fee, can we raise that to $10?
Sure.
And we're giving them the second night free because of the first night, because the first nighters come through, stay and pay now. We want to, if we want to keep them here, to get the second night free, we might get the third day in town. Anything else you see on there?
Then it goes back to $10.
It's always $10.
Just.
Except, yes, yes, just the second night.
Okay.
Yes. Yeah, we don't want to give every other night free, right? I got to. Yeah, we actually had somebody ask about that.
They can go, leave and come back, and go and come back, and they could be here essentially six days and pay three.
Yeah, and I think we have a, I think we have a lemon or four days over there. So we'll have to change, we talked about this last year, but we never changed the sign. $10 is a little easier to make with a $10 bill rather than looking, people come in with $8 and we don't keep cash. So, you know, we can't make change, and it just gets to the asshole.
This is a maximum, we'll just keep that the same.
Pardon?
The schedule would see, if there's a maximum over a week, that would keep that the same.
Yeah, that sounds good, doesn't it?
You should add a water shut off fee, or water leak that gets disconnected, that could be something that everybody would want to, how about your speed?
Yeah, we talked about that a year ago too. And there again, if somebody's really hurting, you know, do you add to their misery, so that's up to you guys to talk about. They're, the, if they get shut off, they're gonna have to pay their bill to get turned back on, so. You know, we're not gonna just go turn it on without getting paid, so that may be hard enough for some.
Or can they make arrangements to get it paid?
Pardon?
Or can they make arrangements?
They can make arrangements, because it's gonna have to come up with something.
Right. I've been in that experience a long time ago.
Well, we worked with some that were behind last year during COVID, and I wrote contracts with several that had, they paid, they, they'd gotten behind, they could handle the monthly, but they couldn't. So we just took, if it was a big amount, we spread it out for a year, small amount, six months, just even payments added to their monthly. And that, that's worked for.
So how long we go with this mowing and nuisance violation for lawns and houses and, and homes? How long do we go before we?
Well, Jonathan has a set, setup that he does a verbal and then a written, and then he talks with the attorney, and then they decide where they're going with that. We, we've gone into a couple and mowed, and they just charged them for the mowing.
And what, where we're standing on these abandoned houses that are sitting empty, nothing's moving on a few of them, and what's happening there? Is that Mike's job, or he has any information on what's going on with that, or is that Jonathan?
Well, I think Mike works with, Jonathan is the enforcer on that, and that, to a degree of, if it becomes health hazard, then we bring in our health professionals on that.
Yeah, yes, special ordinances dealing with those, those kind of the situation. So how long, we knew some houses have been sitting here for some time, nobody's, there's nobody, I know some people passed away on a couple of them, the dad passed away, the mother passed away, and the kids, you can't find who owns what, and who's gonna be responsible? The kids, you can't find who owns what and who's going to be responsible.
They're working on that. He's working on that.
The Reader's Digest version, I'm going to give you the Reader's Digest for your ordinances, is there has to make an initial determination of whether or not it constitutes a nuisance. And there's several criteria. Some of them can be because of health reasons, the grass, the building's coming down, that type of stuff. Then generally what the hardest problem is, you have to give them notice, give fifteen days' notice. And some of the problems is that I've had in other villages and cities is trying to find where the kind of thinking people are who own the property, you know? And then you give them notice and then if they don't do something, it's brought to the council and the council will decide what kind of action you want to take, whether or not you want to pay to have it cleaned up or demolished and, you know, assess it against their property or whether or not you want to negotiate with them if somebody shows up.
We got one of them that buy two daycare, one daycare is my wife, and the other one is by a shed house. And there's crabs and possums and stumps running out of the garage. And we got daycare in both those corners. That's a hazard, I would think, for little children. Thinking that kitty is pretty nice and all of a sudden something bites it, we're able, because we're not doing nothing about it.
I mean, that, it is being worked on, Larry.
Well, there's still animals coming out of there.
I know.
I mean, we got.
It's been, that's been, that has been an issue for years. Well, we should, I mean, we should put our foot down and get something done. Okay, we're trying, okay?
Not.
Trying, you can handle that.
It's important that you take a lot of pictures.
But.
You know, get some people who testify as to what they see.
All right, so we got pictures that'll do more to get things done here then? Okay.
And we, and we have some film, we have some pictures, but then, okay.
But the home is in good repair and maintained, the lawn is maintained or whatever, and it sits empty. It's not, I mean, you can't walk by it and you can't smell something decaying in there. What, is there still sitting ornaments against that, that the building sits empty?
No, there's no, no, Bob, there's no ordinance about it being empty. The ordinance says it's a nuisance from the standpoint of vermin, if there's animals in it, which is what he's talking about. Or if there's a health hazard for some reason. If a building is falling down and some child walked by, I mean, those kind of things. But all of those buildings, if we can, you know, get our nuisance in a one, two, three, if all these properties talking about is it this, is it this, is it this? And then like Mike said, if the council says we need to move on this, but we, you know, but there's also part of the ordinance that says if it is a true health hazard, the, it's a group of, I think it's the mayor, the police and a city health worker can make an immediate decision when it goes.
Well, the particular house I'm talking about, I would sleep in that house.
Well, but when we say immediate, that never works out that way because you got to go through all the steps, as Mike said.
Right, but I don't have an issue with the house. I mean, I was in that house ten times, lay on the sofa, they're sleeping in the house. And now that person has pictures and people in their lawn, pictures of the house. The outside of the house is maintained. I do that personally myself. The lawn is secured for.
Well, come in and talk to us with your, whatever you're going on there because.
I don't think that, Bob, I don't think that that would qualify for that type of remedy.
Thank you.
So when we consider this, you know, a house, a small house, and there's eight to nine cars there all the time and you see about three or four different families living in this house, is that considered apartment or is that a single roomed house?
I would say that's a mess.
That's a mess. I'm serious.
Well, I know you're serious. I was, I was serious, I was serious too.
I can take you there. I seen a, that's a whole bunch of guys who came out in front of the house, tracing across the yard.
Well, I think that's where it comes into play as far as what you have in your.
But the people that live there don't own it. There's an individual that bought it, but there's some workers to live it.
Well, that's generally part of the problem, deciding who the owner is, Doug.
Do we go to the owner and say, hey, we can't have all this?
Yep. Yep, it's a matter of doing it, but sometimes you have some of these buildings and houses, or I've had in the past, where, you know, somebody's died and they just, nobody's followed up with any probate. So who owns it? Who do you give them notice to and that type of thing?
Well, I'm sure nobody's paying rent because their husbands are working for this individual. It's a housing that he's provided for six, maybe seven families there.
Yeah. Well, that could be very well into some of your zoning as far as.
Okay.
Mike has his document, I haven't read it, whether that will apply in that or not. You know, the thing is with those type of situations, experience that I've had in the past, you know, you got to do something every now and then or people just figure it out.
I would like to know where those houses are.
I'll tell you after the meeting.
Well, there's.
And it might be less people now because it was warmer when it was cold. There was a lot of people.
Yes, on the fee schedule, there is a one page that is the pool. And Nikki came in last weekend. We sat down and kind of went through some ideas. Pretty much what last year was. I don't think we talked about raising anything except the family pass, was it?
Yeah, there's a family and a single pass.
But if, and we also talked about the idea that if the pool gets delayed too long, that if they've got less swimming days, maybe we wouldn't raise it this year. So we want a little leeway there, but what is it, a hundred and a quarter?
Yeah.
Was to the family and what was to the individual?
Sixty.
Sixty. So that just went up to ten and twenty-five?
Yes.
Went up ten and twenty-five.
I don't think anyone would react with that much of a promotion.
You think just later?
At a hundred, you're talking.
At a hundred and, at a hundred and fifty and then.
A hundred and fifty and fifty.
And then a bit.
Yes.
We are, our date that we're shooting for is the nineteenth June. Before then, fine, but with the incoming of the water and so forth, then we don't know. Because at the time, they got everything fixed up there instead of putting it going. It has to warm and then we have, we have to have water in there before we know all the stuff works, like the filter and the heater and all that stuff. If there's something there that doesn't work, that has to be replaced, then that's going to take time. So rather than say it's going to open tomorrow, we'd rather put it out there where.
Is that roof over that account or?
The guys have started on it, so.
I guess my question to that is, why the nineteenth?
Why what?
Why the nineteenth?
That's kind of what they thought. Well, eighteen's nineteen, not a hard set date. But just what it would take to get the water and heat it and so forth.
Why not?
Check. It's a guess. We don't know, you know.
Bulge?
We're going to do it as soon as we can, but let's, you know, we're just trying to be a reasonable amount of time to see if they can get it, everything going by then. If they get it done early, they'll open it earlier.
I'm going to make a motion, we open it on the twelfth.
Well, you can't do that if you don't know if it's ready.
Well, that would be the date that gives them all week to get things ready.
That's not full of water, you can open it.
Okay, if it's not full of water, I understand that, but if it's full of water, we can get it open.
If everything's run, I'm hoping to have it open. I don't think here this weekend, but it's probably maybe the first of the week, but I can't guarantee it. They won't be able to do this along the way.
How about we just keep it the way we've said, as soon as it's ready, it'll open it?
Why?
And as soon as it's ready, it'll open it. That's not good.
You said the nineteenth.
Well, we said that we're pretty sure it'll be ready by then, James. That's all we ever said.
Okay, I'll talk a minute.
What day of the week is it going to rain? Tell me that.
It is. It isn't. It isn't going to rain next week.
Maybe you can predict how long it's going to take to heat. We can predict if everything's going to.
It isn't going to rain next week.
If we put the water in slower, why, it'll warm with the sun maybe. Okay.
So are we on the pool then?
Do we approve the piece schedule?
We've got to get to the fee schedules. And the other thing, Nikki, let's bring up what we were talking about, about the cost of the lessons.
Are we going to have the pool then?
Are you what?
Are we going to be on the pool then? Because if we're going to talk about lessons of the pool, then we should come and stay on the pool and then.
I'm wondering about the agenda item. Are we going to have the agenda item?
We're already, yeah, that's why we're talking about that last page.
Including the pool and the beach schedule, that's why.
So we're just talking about the fees for the pool?
Yeah, yeah.
I would just leave the membership, the single pass, the membership at a hundred and the pass at fifty. And if the pool's going to go later, then I expect to drop some money off for that because.
We'll see. I'm good with that. How about swimming lessons? How about swimming lessons?
Well, swimming lessons for members would be thirty and non-members would be forty.
Same with lunch.
Yep.
What, the suggestion was leave everything, right? As far as the family pass and the individual pass, if they get cut out of the few days, I think considering the cost, you know, and the idea of a new pool and all that kind of stuff, I think most families and people are going to be willing to pay that, but if you don't think so, then we can drop a lot of care.
Man, it's not just a few days. We're talking weeks now. Jerry, this is supposed to be open on Memorial when I was at that last meeting. They have a thing, they voted on it and they have that pool on Memorial weekend.
Now, we voted to get it open as soon as we could.
We're looking at weeks.
We voted to open it as soon as we could.
No.
No.
Okay, I'm not going to argue that.
Said, now, Memorial weekend, you all voted on it. And we're talking weeks, we're not talking days. You can pout and you can go like this. I don't care. That's what we talked about. I don't care if they've got the waters working out, they said. My daughter worked for that pool. My daughter worked for this city. They painted that pool themselves, the guards and the city people. It took two days to dry. They filled it, they had it ready within a week. So this is ridiculous. This is absolutely ridiculous. No, she says they got to paint it. That's San Jorge Pool. If it's better than, then it should dry faster.
This is different paint. I painted it how long?
And how come Miller told me it'd be two days?
What's that?
That it took two days to dry. That's what Miller told me. Two days to dry.
We're not going to interfere with, we're not going to interfere with, with the people that fixed the bottom of that pool. He told us when it was ready and we're not going to step in on a contractor that we're paying.
I don't care. It's done. It's painted, it's ready. Get the water in it, get the chemicals in it, get it open for these kids. Last year we didn't have it open and every town around us had it open. So let's get it done. These girls, plus how many other people, paid for their own licensing, two hundred and fifty bucks to give guards. They're like, they paid nothing. Not a damn thing. My parents had paid forty dollars to leave the chemicals. And they're sitting here with nothing to do. How would you feel? Seriously, you got nine guards, two hundred and fifty bucks apiece.
So what do you want from these enders?
I want you guys to get that pool open.
We're doing what we can do?
No, you're not.
Okay.
You're not. I don't believe that at all. They got two, said they got two weeks of the water on there, all day they got that thing running. I don't, I don't believe it. Jerry said they got that fixed. So let's go. I don't care. You never want that pool open. It's a last year.
You have no stinking idea what I want, what I don't.
Seriously. Just get it open. I know what it takes to open that pool.
I would like to say that you are out of order at this point. Let's move on.
She can talk.
The Aaron, Aaron Phillips, would you like to talk?
No, 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 no. She's, she can talk. She can state her piece. She can talk.
I have lived in the.
Oh, she's doing it, saying get the pool open. What's that accomplishing?
So is there, is there a way to expedite filling it or to make it happen quicker? Like, I've had a standing right following, you can fill them and stuff, I mean, you know. If there's a way, can we, this is as much as we can to go. Because, you know, because like, you can't, like, say, for a year or two and so, I mean, so I think that's a lot of my is just hurt. Or, you know, as much as you can. Can I go to the yard?
All right, guys, have I ever told you to slow down the water? Have I ever told you I don't want the pool open? Have I ever in any way said, make this process as hard as it can be? I don't want the pool to open. And they would be the first ones to know that if I was trying to sabotage it.
Well, it's pretty how every other year we don't have this kind of problem.
Well, every other year we don't have COVID.
We don't have.
They were told.
Don't need to start the COVID crap.
Well, we were told not to open them last year.
Well, then why was every pool around here?
I don't know. They can do what they want to.
They gave permission to open up last year.
Okay.
Every one of them. I went to how many baseball games, softball games, whatever there was, and every little town had a pool open.
Okay. Tell me how, which, you went, I know you went to Bloomville.
Yeah.
So what others were open?
And, let's see, what did you say that whole thing? Garnet's was open, yeah. They were definitely open because they were, they were bringing their park over.
Yeah, yeah.
But there was a town, there was a, there was a, I believe, a town.
Well, you said every little town around is open.
They were, I was open by okay.
Okay, I want to move on if we can. We are not accomplishing a thing.
Can I say something positive about the pool? The One Night Association allowed the pool group to put a letter in and just letting them know that we are already trying to raise funds for a new pool. And so that now I'm going to mail my letter for everyone, so, and I include all of the different ways.
Thank you.
I got the letter today.
I stopped that, so.
So we're done with bees or with bees or what?
Are we done with bees? We need to prove that.
Why don't we, why don't we put together what you said and we'll bring it down next month or?
That's fine. Yeah, that's fine.
How, question?
Yes.
Okay, so you're going to go ahead with the, the family and the single passes?
Well.
Swimming lesson fees as they were.
And we might go ahead, you know, Nikki, you said we did the pool item. Go with the pool item. Let's get this over with. What do you want to say about it?
Um, I'm assuming they have the hours. We had talked about changing the hours from twelve-thirty to five-thirty and then six to eight. Um, with the health event, I'm going to have to change the hours from eleven-thirty to five-thirty and then six to eight, Sunday through Thursday. And then Friday and Saturday, eleven-thirty to five-thirty. For that.
Yeah, did, is, do you have those already, Arlene? Did we talk about that in there?
No, I just changed it an hour earlier than what we had discussed. We just started building their pools at eleven-thirty. We have the amendment, we have the guard, the guards need to start working. There's no reason why that pool can't open at eleven-thirty.
I don't, I'm sure that the kids would love it. I don't have a problem.
Say that again, kids.
Eleven-thirty to five-thirty and then six to eight.
Okay.
And that's Sunday through Thursday. And then Friday and Saturday, eleven-thirty to five-thirty.
Okay.
And Nikki and I were down there this afternoon and there's somebody going through looking for a pool. It was the South Dakota car and they were looking for a pool.
Yeah, they were. They were. And then I had made up a money check, cash receipt sheet. I just did this today. So I would be getting one of these. This is something we can use to help keep track of the funding that comes into the pool that will be deposited into the deposit slip at night that would be dropped off at the city office. So this would help keep track of the cash that we receive down there, if that makes sense.
Do you want, when people call, would you prefer they just come into the office and pay the family passes?
Um, that's, that's ideal to do, just so the kids don't have to deal with money and bondage. And on the checks, people would write for the Crofton Pool. There's no Crofton Pool account at the time. So they need to write to the city of Crofton.
Right.
And so we had problems with that when the pool was open. It'd be ideal if they come to the city office, but that's not going to happen all the time because parents drop kids off at the door and say, you know, adios amigos. And here they are. As for snacks and items like that, we get ice cream from the store up here. We usually get molts, freezies, ice cream sandwiches and ice cream bars. That's about what the freezer will hold down there. Lacy did go in and get a list and ask them for an updated price list and we did not get that yet.
She's making one up.
Yeah, and I heard you had gone in too and asked for that also at that time.
And she's trying to make any. And she, she's trying to make it easy so we just go through and check what we want this week so you can report her every week?
Uh, yeah, yeah. Just makes a list and then whatever, it just all depends what the kids want. When we need it, we'll just go and order it at that time. We'll set a price for it, um, and then count the money at the end of the night. On the, on the sheet. That's there. Um, also for lessons, swimming lessons, kids have been calling for swimming lessons. They want, everybody wants to get in for swimming lessons. I can't give anybody a date for swimming lessons because I don't, there's not enough water in the pool to even do anything with. So I keep holding them up, holding them up. Um, there are families that want private lessons because their kids don't want to be around other kids. Their hours don't work with the hours that swimming lessons are. So I've asked some of the guards if they would do private lessons and this would be on their time. And the person would pay the guards. Um, if the city needs money, we'd like to donate a dollar, a couple dollars for the use of the swimming pool so that the guards could do individual lessons with families in Crofton. Um, so we were asking for that. What else was there?
That's what we talked about, was the liability of it.
Yeah, and, and I know, Nikki, this is what, we talked about this and, and, um, the fact that you, I'm trying to think how we can get around this, you know, when we talked about that and said, I don't know we can arrange it, but if you're going to charge a certain amount of money for a lesson if they're a fam, if they've got family passes, remember. And another amount for that, then that separates those two, which means that you, that, that it's under the city auspices. Once it's under the city auspices, then the city liability probably comes in. And you, it won't make any difference what you pay us, it's still our pool. So the, the, you had private lessons last year and those they were paid. So this is, so, but if, and I asked you then, how many guardians did they have, all have to be there? If you have to, if you demand that they're there, then they become separate.
Not for private lessons, not all guards need to be there. For regular swimming lessons, scheduled swimming lessons that we would advertise in the newspaper, I need all my guards there. Yes.
So you're separating out two different kinds of lessons?
Yep, private and public. That's a good way to put it. Private and public.
So when's the private ones going to happen?
We can't, I don't have a date. I can't do any date. It's, the pool's not open. I can't give anybody any date. It's a testament.
When are, oh, when you, what was the best timeframe?
The timeframe would be in the morning when the guards are not on duty with the city or in the evenings when they're not on, on city clock. And that, we've had a couple families ask for evening because they can't get there in the morning.
I think what you want to do is make sure that, from the liability standpoint, the city will contact your insurance carrier. Make sure that they would be covered if there was an issue.
Is that what they do for the, like, the exercise group in here too then?
No, I don't, I don't know anything about an exercise group there.
Yeah, because on this, if you look on the form, there's a pistol movement and everything, so what do they do for that?
We just charge them 20 bucks.
So would that not why it would be the difference for the pool? Because that's something else in action. Someone's needed an exercise group, I don't understand.
I think I would just check with your carrier, make sure you're...
Dr. Ryan. Do you know what the difference would be?
If somebody breaks an ankle doing an exercise class or hurts himself on the edge of the pool?
Probably should look at all of those, but...
Is she not just talking about the, the lifeguard getting paid directly by another person?
Yeah.
And can we do that?
Well, that's, that's why I'm saying, from a carrier's standpoint, they might look at that as something different than being...
But is that what the exercise group does? So they just pay the leader?
Just forget the exercise group. We'll check with Ryan on that. We need to know because these are kids. They're not like adults.
And they're still, I'm looking at it as still, it's the same thing.
It's the same thing.
The same thing. She's getting paid and the guards would be getting paid.
We should have looked at it when they did it.
Okay.
We wanted to run it up because it needs to be addressed.
Okay, the, the labor laws also talk about if you have an employee that works subcontract as well as wage, that, that there's certain rules that go by whether all of it's counted one way or another, so we need to look at those.
So do we not want to offer private lessons?
No, I'm not saying that. We need to ask, we need to...
Talk to the carrier.
See what their thoughts are.
Are you going to hear that, James?
Uh, I can hear Ryan call. I think he's back from vacation.
Yep. Was there anything else?
I mean, you still got private lessons.
It's true. I just think you just need to just double check with them. Because if you've got a private payment, that goes with the liability.
Yep.
You don't want to be in that. They should be able to tell you that pretty quickly, so you know before the water.
Right. And as, when the pool gets filled and it gets opened, then we can advertise, I can hold up the city office so that you guys know when we can do swimming lessons for the public and we can do something in the paper. And we will be more than happy to contact everybody that you've given me numbers for and then have contacted me directly with a date. Would that be fine with the council? If we just set up a date, it doesn't need to be in the minutes or anything else like that, correct? We can do that? And as for the guards' hours, I will make sure they don't over, go over 40 hours a week. And I did a schedule a couple years ago and nobody was allowed to go over 40 hours a week.
That would be nice.
Yeah, as long as the pool is staffed appropriately. I would like to just...
I looked, we looked up today, the wages paid two years ago was 23,000. Plus, the, the figures in there were wrong because there were some IRAs and, you know, IRAs paid, so there's some stuff wrong there. But that, that means about, you take 10% or 15%, so for your other, you know, your social security and all that.
So during the meantime, when the pool's filled in and getting ready, I'd like to keep the guards down there cleaning and painting and making sure everything's ready to go so that they, hopefully soon, we can open this pool. Because these kids need jobs.
Well, we're not obligated to give them jobs, but if there's work for them to do, you know, are we, are we going to pay them to get it ready?
Yes.
Yeah, I don't have a problem with that.
Poise, don't be vindicative.
But we're not just to give, create a job for them.
No, they will be down there cleaning, painting, scrubbing, whatever. Lacy sees fit down there during the day that they will keep busy with.
Okay.
So I just want to make sure that I have approval to have the guards down there and do my scheduling.
I have no problem with that. I have no problem with that.
I have a question. The pool doesn't open until January 19th. Are we going to open a little bit instead of opening at 11:00?
We should go up and tell that we have guards. Um, as for Lacy, no, they start to head off to college on August 10th. You know, as long as we can have a pool operator there that we have to have, and I do have four, um, we could go, we could try to go as late as we can. You know, and a lot of it's up to the, the guards too, you know, when they want to start getting ready for school. So I would keep the pool open as long as we can. I mean, honestly, I mean, the guards want to work. So... And that's why I considered opening the pool earlier.
Should we play that beer? Yeah, I mean, I think we're all in the same agreement that happy kids have as much fun as they can when the pool's open.
I agree with that.
Could we post something around town so people can have a little update about, hey, we're ready for filling the pool and hoping to anticipate the open on the 19th? Just so there's people that be happy in this room and they can hear that, that is happening and there may be some people to talk about.
I mean, the cards are down, the pool will be open.
I don't know, I'm just...
I think if you tell, I think if you tell kids and everybody till the 19th, we're going to lose a lot of people. We're going to lose a lot of people that want swimming lessons because it's almost open. These kids need to learn to start swimming. Um, they're going to buy memberships elsewhere, over in Yankton. Um, they're going to find ways to get to other facilities and not be here in town.
I agree with hers.
I agree with her.
Yeah, I was told today.
So I don't know if, you know, if we say the 19th and, to me, if I hear the 19th, the pool's not going to open until the 19th. You know, when everybody hears that, okay, the 19th, hoping the 19th, you pretty much know it's not going to be till the 19th. So if we say that, I think it's really going to put a damper on a lot of people.
We'll do everything in our power to get it open for the next season.
That'd be great. That'd be great.
Okay.
That's all I got. Any questions? No? Any problems with the pool opening up?
Has anybody gone down and looked at the pool? Miller did a really good, Miller did a good job. They did a wonderful job.
Hit it back to the roof now.
It's the other guy here? Andrew, Brad's ready.
Brad, are you ready?
I'm ready.
You ready?
Come on, Brad. Take over.
I'll give you guys two, uh, two quotes as part of the ones for, uh, one was for 3,900 to, uh, spray the roof with the RoofMax product. The other one was for 8,900 to, uh, apply hot, uh, apply modified vitamin P to hot asphalt. I don't know what route you guys want to go.
Do you have any roofs that you've done this to?
Uh, four.
Four?
Yep.
Uh, both, both or just one?
Okay.
Both or just one? Have you done the 3,200 and the 8,900? Have you done roofs?
Yep, yep. You have the modified vitamin, uh, more small, less smaller, so I've packed, yeah, packed jobs, so.
Okay.
Yeah. So I don't know what route you guys are wanting to go, but, uh, I was asked to supply assets on both of them, so.
Sure.
What, um, are those roots in town, Brad?
What's that?
The ones you've done, are they in town?
Uh, uh, three up by the river, one up the, uh, up the RoofMax. The other, the other, uh, ones are up by the river as far as the, uh...
Are they residential?
So.
Residential.
Yep. Uh, and so the modified vitamin, uh, basically I have a, uh, contact in Sioux City that he works for, uh, the commercial company. He can bring, I don't have a liquidate through it. I have a basically subcontracting company that would do the project, get it. So I'm not a, I'm a contractor, general contractor, builder. I mean, uh, modified vitamin, that's not my...
So tell us the difference between the 3,200 and the 8,900.
Okay, so...
What are the two different?
So RoofMax Spray is a, so your, this roof is made out of petroleum. As petroleum dries out your shingles, they crack, they get rid of. Uh, these are your shingles, it's a rolled roof, angle system, but basically same, same product, just a different concept of what it's put on. Anyways, this product absorbs, it's made of soybean oil, absorbs into the, uh, rolled roof in, keeps it flexible, keeps it pliable. Is your roof leaking? Is there any leaks in the roof?
No, yeah.
I, there's, there's, there's events that need to be patched, which either way those have get, uh, covered on the patch correctly. I guess, I don't know what channel you guys are trying to go down, so. I mean, if you're, uh, if you're looking for preventative maintenance, a quick, uh, quick fix, I mean, for 3,900, if you spray this on, you're going to be good for five, 15 years for your, to keep your roof flexible. If you want to spend 8,900 bucks, you're going to get a better product, so. I don't, I don't...
What's the 8,900, what's the 8,900 dollar product?
Uh, basically, you're applying, you're rolling a hot asphalt on the roof, yep, and then, and then putting basically another layer of this over top of that.
Oh, you are?
You're putting what now? What did you say?
Uh, so modified vitamin is about rolled roofing, you know, it's an asphalt. So basically, you're applying a hot asphalt to the roof and then putting another layer of what's on there.
A rolled out layer?
Yeah.
Another rolled out layer?
Yep.
What's the likely specs to see on something like that? Sticky?
Good question. So you go, you go on top of it existing. What, so the, the best part?
You can put a rolled roof on there for 9, for 8,000?
Uh, of, of hot asphalt, it's a, it's a, it's not as thick as, as this. And see, I don't have any specs as far as from the level three asphalt, level four asphalt. I mean, I was asked to, uh, you know, price, uh, price, uh, the roof.
Sure.
To, uh, Casey, but I don't know what, I don't know what he's quoting or what he's talking about, so.
Okay.
So those are my two. I guess, if, if you wanted to do this roof right, I mean, you put a decker shingle on a steel coated asphalt shingle that you can, uh, go on a radius roof, but it'd be the best way to go if you want to lighten the, you know, longer length of roof. I mean, both of these products are kind of preventative.
Fight, it's fight.
Yeah, they are. So I don't know what avenue you're trying to go, you're trying to go down, so. But, you know, I don't know what things are, I was just, I was asked to quote it.
Okay.
I don't know.
You were up there.
Yeah, yeah. And so you're, you know, three-fourths of the roof, uh, is older than this, this, uh, north quarter looks a lot better. It's got a lot more, uh, granite on the, uh, the gold roof again. That was obviously done, uh, I don't know how long ago, but done a second, or done before this year was.
So in your professional opinion, the sprayed on thing, the add life back to it would, would work with what we have left?
Yeah, yeah, would, yep, yep. It's going to, you know, it's going to keep your petroleum, it's going to replace the petroleum that's dried out and keep it, it's going to prevent from, uh, cracking.
Building materials are kind of high right now, man.
What's that?
I know that too.
Huh?
Building materials are awful high right now.
Yep, yep.
And I've been watching it, talking to different suppliers and they said, October, November, it might level off down this way.
That'd be sweet, yeah.
So maybe, maybe we just weather this.
Yeah, I got, I got fun to do, I'm a known...
I'm just saying, maybe we...
I don't even care, honestly, the difference.
With this high price, everybody's, everybody's crazy with it right now.
Yep, yep. And that was, I think, back in, uh, a month and a half ago, my quarter, so I was 340.
My next year it might level off down there with 340.
Yep, yep. So when I, when I inspect the roof, I mean, I see no, I see no leaks, you know, that are...
Uh, you can see, I don't see no spots in here, I mean.
Yeah.
I just don't think that at the high price, it's going to do anything right now.
And, and that's why I, I guess maybe that's why I was asked to, uh, a couple different avenues to go down, so.
Yeah. What timeframe about do you think for either process would it take to do this?
Yeah, the RoofMax, I mean, it would take me a half day to spray that on. It just soaks into, soaks into the product, keeps it flexible, so I can add it in the next two weeks. Uh, the other product, uh, the process, I guess, uh, got to fit in my schedule, so. When I was first asked to quote the product, did they, you know, I was told, uh, give me a quote by a week and so it can be done in May, well, in June, so, yeah. Until, uh, until I'm given a direction to go to, I guess I can't then start it.
Yeah, well, that, I don't think that was ever intended.
Yeah, that's just what I'm stating, be, give me a quote by a week, so that way by, uh, May, we can then do something on it.
Okay, any questions? We need to hear from Casey too, and he's, he's on the job, so.
Okay.
Probably not going to make it.
I think, I think I may.
Hopefully, maybe before we get done.
Yep.
Thanks, Brad.
Yep.
The, I, I think I would like to, um, I still think that we should have a meeting that has, that concentrates entirely on the financials. And you've talked about budget, talked about audit. You know, if, if this audit is so bad, I need to have that pointed out to me. There's, um, I want to be able to show you the separation and the use of funds. That's not a need, that's not something we can do tonight, that's not something that takes a short time. Uh, when we have everything done, then we need to go back and you can look at all of the financial statements. It will affect the closing, or excuse me, will affect the balance sheets or anything because of transfers. The, um, the, the, um, balances over into the balance sheet. Um, in a cash basis, we don't have a balance sheet, that's why it's so confusing. So we put out a balance sheet and yet the auditor won't look at the balance sheet. That's all transferred into a statement of condition. And so we need to take a look at those so we know what we're, that we're talking about the same thing. We do need to approve the claims tonight and then, um, I want to talk to you a little bit about the Baseball Association grant. Aaron, you wanted to say something about that too?
I have a view.
Okay, so if, can we just approve the claims and then let Aaron take over?
What's the total on this? We don't have a total on the bottom of these. The amounts are being paid, I mean, I, I don't have a calculator that I can...
What do you mean, the total?
You should have a total on these.
You want a total on the bottom?
Not on the bottom, no. I don't have one of those.
You want to, you want to add all the payments together?
I wanna know whether monthly claims, I mean, pay how much money you're spending, instead of just who gets what. All these added up, you have a total on...
How, what did I say? I guess we just have that.
And on a, on a actual page in the estimates, the actual should have over there, so you got some idea how much we're spending each month, total.
We'll get the total.
What?
You want the total, what's the...
Totals of each one.
Okay. So, they are, by each one, the total...
Nothing on the bottom, the total.
But that's all of them added, yeah?
The grand total of the amounts over here.
Okay.
Uh, who's Hawkins?
Hawkins?
Yeah, where's Hawkins? I haven't seen that one before. Who, what is Hawkins?
Uh, Hawkins is chemical?
Yeah. Chemicals for the...
Hawkins, Hawkins is, uh, chlorine, uh...
Okay.
Is a bill sometimes, and you'll be...
They're right here.
Who's Blackburn?
Steven.
Pardon? They're always here, saying noise very much.
We'll keep an eye on them.
Yeah. So, can you look at that okay while Aaron does whatever he can?
Yes.
Go ahead, Aaron. And I probably have something to add because I've had several phone calls today. So, go ahead, okay?
On April fifth, I addressed the council regarding the Knox County improvement grants and, um, of getting it awarded. And the discussion regarding that, I said that the baseball association had an idea about, uh, bleacher project and creating more seed. At the meeting, I asked if we needed a motion to approve that, and the city said, no, the city is obligated to whoever wins, to distribute the money to whoever wins this. Council verbally approved. The application and the city clerk included a letter of support on the city letter that had the final submission of that application. I got a notification from Knox County towards the end of, or, the beginning of May, saying that they need to have actual minutes to approve it, just because that's what the board, the, towards the board, they did, just saying that the city understood it and would award that money. So, I then asked the city to be put on the next agenda, which is this one. I then also gave them an example of what needed to put other entities had said to get that approved. Then, I got a phone call Friday other meeting, finding that the mayor had called questioning the wording of the, and the city's administration of the grant, since the association was not a 501(c)(1). Knox County consulted the county attorney, and because of the unwillingness of the city to administer the grants, he advised canceling the check and not awarding Crofton any money.
How much was that check?
Ten thousand dollars. The baseball association was the only one that put the application in. The grant will be now discussed at the board supervisor meeting tomorrow, because they're the only ones that can go over the data and be adjusted. Crofton may not be awarded anything at all. The deadline has passed, so no one can apply it until next year, and is completely out of Crofton's hands, and in the board of the annual super. I don't know what else to say.
Okay.
I'm pretty upset.
Yeah.
I honestly...
I'm sure you are.
Hi, Aaron.
So, so, let's go back, um, let's go back to the, um, the grant itself. Must the actual legislative, I forgot the number, says that the money must be awarded for those eligible to receive it, are either a city or a government entity, or a nonprofit 501(c). Okay, you agree with that? Okay. So, when you came in and said the city needs to apply for this, and I don't remember that thing about the city agrees to award it to whoever...
I had it.
That was a verbal...
It's on the ground here, no.
Okay, okay, let's say. That was a verbal thing, so that doesn't matter, one way or another, whether I remember it or not. The, but, what I did say to you at that time was that we had had this issue with the city giving money to the baseball association, which was not a 501(c), or is that the right number, is 501(c)?
501(c).
That, um, we needed to make sure that maybe they were the 501(c) or how we did that, because if the city gives them the money, we are in violation of what the auditors told us we could do.
I talked to Craig today.
I'm not finished, thank you. I also called the county at the, um, economic development office and voiced those concerns with her. Both of you insisted that the city had to make the application because it had to come through the city, because they wanted the openness to know where the money went, and so they were gonna give it to the city, and the city had to give it to someone else. And I said, that's all fine and dandy, but we can't give it to anybody.
We can't. We can't.
Okay.
As long as we're the grant administrators.
We're not the grant administrators.
We are. The grant's gonna come to the city, the baseball association is gonna give us a bill, we pay the bill on the grant. I talked to Craig today, he said that is legal. Did you talk to Craig about that?
All right, would you not yell at me?
You started. It is legal. I spoke to Craig today at four o'clock. He said, as long as we are the grant administrator...
All right, I need to, I need you to explain to me what you think the grant administrator...
The grant comes through Crofton. I talked to Dale Reisberg about it today also. The grant comes through Crofton. They, the association gives us a bill, we pay the bill with that grant. We're the administrator of the...
Guess, guess, um, James, that was never, ever what, uh, we were told, we were told that we were to give ten grand to the baseball. Now, Bob Hagy came, just give me this moment.
Bob?
Bob Hagy...
Bob brought that up at the meeting.
Bob Hagy came into my office today, and we sat down, and I said, Bob, we cannot give you the ten thousand. We can't do it.
We can.
Just be quiet. And listen to me a minute.
Well, we can, we can. That's the problem here, is we can't.
Will you be quiet just a minute?
No, because you're wrong. We can't. If we're the grant, I heard it directly, I asked him, he said, yes. If you're the administrator of the grant, the grant comes through the city, we can give it to them.
Then you have to apply for a grant.
We did.
No, you have to apply to the city for a grant.
We did.
No, you didn't. You applied to the county.
Because that's where the grant administrator is.
Exactly, we're not the grant administrator.
I asked him, if the grant comes through us, we're the grant administrator, he said, yes. He told me, yes, on the phone today.
Okay, I'll call Craig tomorrow. In the meantime, in the meantime, let me tell you what Bob and I agreed to, because this had never been mentioned before, so I'm assuming you talked to Bob maybe or not, I don't know.
I don't have to.
Um, but Bob came in and said, where can we go with this? And he happens to remember when Charlie made him sign the baseball lease, because the city can't give the baseball money. Larry, you know that too. You're on the board.
I'm on softball, I barely play baseball, yeah.
Yes. And they, and Charlie said, we're having, we have to sign a contract, we have to sign a lease, we have, you have to pay you to do the mowing out there, because we cannot give you money.
We're not.
And that's where the lease came.
We need to sign a sheet, we need to deliver it.
I know that, but I'm saying, you're aware of this.
I'm aware of it, but I didn't sign it.
Okay, I'm talking about baseball. So, they have never applied for a, they have never applied for a, a, a nonprofit. So, in effect, that application, which Ryan signed, and you sent me a copy of, in three different places, and I had a copy of the, the, of application, in three different places says, you must show proof of nonprofit standing. They could not do that, because they're not a nonprofit. So, they, so, whatever happened, in whoever's mind says, well, we can give it to the city, and the city can give it to us. You can give it to the city, but the application was with baseball field, and you can't do that. So, I said, we'll, we'll give it, so with Bob today, I said, how about you give us your bills, and we can pay those up to that ten thousand dollars, we'll make an agreement to do that? And he said, done, problem solved.
Where's the ten thousand dollars coming from?
It would come to the city from them, that's what they said we got. Joanne Fisher contacted me and said, we'll send this to the city.
Send what to the city?
The ten thousand.
I just talked to Joanne Fisher today, she said, we're not getting the damn check.
Oh, God.
I was on the phone with her this afternoon for a half an hour.
I know that, but it was originally granted to the city, James.
And that's where the charges...
When did you find it?
A long time ago.
I talked to her the day.
I know that.
And she said...
My God, James, listen.
We're not getting the check, that wasn't today.
But that was decided just recently, because it can't go to the city and then be given to the baseball. So, after I talked to Bob, you're gonna have to get your timeframe right here. After I talked to Bob, then the county called me, Joanne called me, and said that Kelly, the economic development director, was in the office with her. And Kelly, um, wanted a witness, so, you're probably not going to get this money, I said. Well, that's too bad, because Bob and I were just talking about how this could be done. And she said, because Dale and, anyway, they've contacted her, and then she contacted the lawyer, same story, so they've talked to the lawyer. And, and by the way, what was that reason? Because what?
Unwillingness to give the money.
Okay, well, let's, let's say that my, my concern about the lawfulness of giving the money, okay? So, if, if that gets settled, fine. So, I have made up my mind that I'm going to the commissioner's office or meeting tomorrow and see if they will allow us to pay those bills out of that ten thousand. We, we backed the softball association, but they were a legal 501(c), and we just wrote a letter of support. When you ask for a letter of support, we gave that willingly, but...
And that's all I was asked about, because that's all I was told, that we needed is a letter of support from the city, and that's all I asked, what we had to ask the...
Well, and I think we can chalk this all up to, to, to the new person in the economic development. Well, she can't be there very long, because Megan just retired a year or two ago with my daughter, so, um, and, and newness of all of us, whatever, but you cannot, the city cannot give money to anybody, profit or nonprofit.
Well, we can pay the bill.
Well, we probably can.
We can pay the bill, that was the whole...
And that was a question that I was going to ask Mr., uh, Mr....
That's what Craig told me on the phone today, that if we got the grant, we could pay their bill.
Well, gee, how about that?
Did you call Craig before you, you did all this?
No.
Why not?
Why?
Because he was the one telling you that we couldn't do it.
I just found out about this this afternoon, James.
That we're not getting the check.
Yeah.
You found out today, but you started this process weeks ago. I tell, I...
I already talked to Ja, I already talked to Craig when he was here.
Right.
You asked for your money to a nonprofit, we're not...
We're paying their bill.
But that wasn't the way to present it.
It's because you didn't follow up and ask Craig.
That was not, no, it has nothing to do with Craig.
Craig was the one that told you you couldn't do it.
James, that's not...
True, it is, hundred percent true.
Okay. I'm done.
Can the city file the bleachers this evening? Can the city can get it, could have gotten a grant to do it?
Exactly.
Yes, but how did, how did we get from there to here?
The baseball association didn't get the grant on behalf of making the Crofton baseball part better?
Crofton, the Crofton Baseball Association is just simply not eligible to get the money because they're not a nonprofit. It's a matter of...
But they could write it on behalf, which was the kind of things like, to me, they created the money to make the baseball feel fit.
It doesn't matter the reason. Would you tell them that it doesn't matter the reasons, it could be the noblest? I don't know enough about this.
But we can pay, you said, we can pay the bill, right? We can pay the bill.
I don't know that for sure, we'll have to go to the meeting and find out if they'll go for that. They, no, it isn't. They're having a meeting tomorrow. There's nothing too late about it.
But how, how did we get from, to this point? Explain to me how we got to this point where they, they wrote the check, the check was written with our name on it.
No, with the city's name on it.
The city's name on it. Well, that's what I mean, our name on it, the city's name's on it. How did we get from them writing us a check, and then, and then pulling it out from underneath us? How did, where did, what happened to get us to that point?
What happened? Because you can't, because you cannot give money to, and, the city cannot give money to anybody.
But we can pay bills.
Yes.
The city could have put that ten thousand dollar check on and bought the bleachers with it?
That's what...
We could.
But that's not what the baseball association asked us.
What did they...
Aaron told me that I was supposed to write a check to the baseball, and we just...
That is not what I said at all.
No, that's not what was talked about. We were doing a grant for the baseball association. Hey, where did you go?
I'm not, 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 I'm
Pay the bill.
No, that's, no, we're not...
Pay the bill.
That's not what you ever said, ever.
We talked about municipal agents.
We did. I'm in the meeting. We did, we did exactly that.
I said a dozen times, we can't give that money. I said that a dozen times, we can't give that money.
And we never said we were going to give it to them. We just said we were going to help them pay, do it in profit.
Okay, well, you know what? You can all come with me to the commissioner's.
I am, I am going to meet them.
Very good.
They pray to God they give it to us.
How long have you known about this $10,000 grant or something?
I, when Aaron brought it in on the first day and it was due that day, but they gave 30 days.
When did you first, when were you aware of it? What did you first wear to commit yesterday?
What, about what?
This grant, this grant that you're talking about.
Well, Aaron told me the first day of April or May, whichever one it was.
You were bothering whichever council?
It was Thursday and she was handling it.
You're the mayor, you should be informing us what's going on.
I was, I did it the next week.
She did, she brought it to the meeting.
We've known about the, we've known about the grant. When did we find out we got the grant?
Um, I was notified, I can find out anything, but we didn't actually receive it because it had to be...
No, approved by the board.
Because they had to have it stated in the city.
Right.
Okay, do you want to read the language that you sent us?
I just would like a little more communication because I submitted that they had nobody from the office email me back and questioned it. If there was an issue, all I had to do was...
I didn't see it. You never brought anything in.
I can't read anything because I get questions about finding out.
Oh, come on, Erin.
Okay.
Nobody brought anything out, you know, come on. We're here on a kind of, okay, tonight.
This one goes from Bloomfield motion that I want person to continue to apply to the grant process for the East Ball Field project. But now it's coming to the person to be seconded and approved by the council.
To continue with the...
Whether to apply for a ball program.
But that wouldn't have said that we approved that whatever. So that was to continue with the process. So that wouldn't be inappropriate.
That was from the county, that's what we think that I sent that.
So the fact is, we couldn't approve something that we had never brought to the board and we couldn't approve something that we didn't know what we were approving. So I, I'm not going to argue this any further, you're right. I hope that we can get it straightened out. We, but, and the softball or the baseball people said, "Yep, we'll go apply for that nonprofit because we know we need to do that now." And we've been knowing that for a long time or so. That's exactly why that lease was written with Charlie, was to straighten up the idea that you can't give money. That's why the $2,000 that the baseball association gets every year has to have a contract that says that you mowed the stupid infield to get paid that $2,000. It's a contract for labor and that's the only way you get to $2,000. Go, man.
Was that a contract, an annual contract or was that a life on offer?
You know, it was kind of written like a perpetual thing. So, you know, and we've honored it every year.
If the city had any issues with the grant, I would appreciate that the city would have contacted me instead of going around and asking the other entities why it was applied for and questioned. I had no idea until Friday that you would call questioning things. I didn't know there was even an issue with it.
I talked to you a couple of times.
Not about that at all.
Yeah, okay.
I as a board member was not aware of it until my phone blew up today.
Okay.
So I had a meeting with our county supervisor and he said, "This is what we need to do."
What do we need to do?
We need to say hi to him tomorrow morning, tell him that we're going to pay the bill with it and please let us have the grant.
I'm glad we're all thinking of the same thing.
We should never have gotten to this position, we should never have gotten to this place, ever.
Absolutely.
Never should have got here, ever. This is just totally wrong.
Well, I think that if we go back to that meeting, I think that I made some remarks there too, but that's all right. I'm not out of here anymore.
Are we going to have a second meeting to go over the financials?
Can I just interprove quick?
Yep.
It probably wouldn't hurt you to do something along this line, to get something in your minutes to help you for tomorrow.
I actually need the minutes from that meeting that we approved along with those numbers.
They didn't, they didn't even put it in the minutes that I talked about.
We need a motion to pay the bill upon their receipt of the grant.
There you go, there you go.
I think I'd have something, so, you know, if you go...
That's what I was going to suggest, that we as a council, that you as a council, you know, agree to using the $10,000 grant money to pay for the upgrades to the baseball field.
Yes. I'll make a motion to pay for the new bleachers with the $10,000 grant money.
Uh, Bob?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
Larry?
Yes.
And, hi.
Yeah.
Bob and I talked a little bit and I said, "Maybe the next time this rolls around, we can save the phone calls and get it back to the softball and the baseball." He said, "I would do that in a heartbeat."
But then the city will have to do the application, right? Not us.
Yep, and if you look at the grants that were applied, several of them were from cities for, like Bloomfield applied for a grant to a certain ball field. And we could have done that, but, um, actually, Erin, I was told that one of those people that was on that committee was under the impression that you had applied for that grant under the city's name. So see, there's all kinds of wrong stuff out there. So let's, don't just jump to conclusions that I hate everybody, I hate kids and I don't want the pool open and all of that stuff because half of this stuff is a bunch of garbage. And you're, you're building on a bunch of, um, I-wants and, and gossip and whatever. And, you know, if you just literally don't want me to have any power whatsoever, then, you know, I don't really. I don't do anything without board approval. The day-to-day business of the answering the phone calls and answering the complaints and I read the letter from Joe and he's looking for the mayor. So who do you want to handle this? It's an interesting concept that I was told a long time ago that, you know, when you begin to think about hiring an administrator, the big value to having an administrator is that in the mayor's position, what they're supposed to be doing is the day-to-day carrying on a business. If you're retired, you want to go fishing. You don't want to be in there every day. If you're not retired, you're still working, you don't have time to be in there every day. But I'll guarantee you, there's enough work in that office every day for more than one person, more than two people, more than three people a good share of the time. It's not just collect water bills and send out bills. It takes the girls probably an hour and a half to get through the emails that come in. And some of them need to be kept and some of them don't. There is, there are judgments made all the way along the line. If we stopped and asked a, how would we get you all together and we can't do it without, without breaking the quorum laws, we can't call you and ask all of you what you want to do. We can't do that. That's why you elect a mayor. And remember, that's an election and you cannot treat me like your employee. I'm sorry, but you cannot have a closed meeting to discuss employees and come after me. That's not legal.
So is this systemic issue? Because there are towns bigger than us have issues similar to us that do that with one and a half employees and don't have a mayor and an officer. So something is flawed in our system somehow.
Well, depends on what are you want the people in the office to be responsible for. I am told that a good share of the mayors came in every night and talked to Nancy and helped make decisions. I don't know if that's true, it wasn't around. But there's, and you have to understand too, I think, that the times have changed from the good old days when, you know, Steve Kegler said to me one time, "Life was so simple when Wendell and I could sit on the porch and drink a beer and decide which road to fix." It was simple. It's not anymore. There's laws, there's this, everything we do, we have to check, see if this is against the law. Call the lawyer, find out if we can do this.
I guess what my biggest concern is, Cheryl, is when I first got on the board, is that emails were sent to me and Cheryl, I was, I was laid up for two years. And I got an email about every day and what was going on on that day. And I don't see why we can't be abreast of some of this on a day-to-day before, if we knew about this way back when, that's fine. But we should have an email on a day-to-day basis or a weekly thing, this is what's happening so the board members have got some kind of ammunition with the general public, ask me some questions. Shit, I don't even know nothing about it.
So who sent you emails to bring you that?
We get a lot of them from Marley.
Well, then...
We get a lot of them from Marley, we don't get too many of them from you. We don't get too many from you.
You want me to send emails? You don't even like me. Why do you want me to send you an email?
I said that, right? Is it that? I didn't pour it in the paper. I don't give a shit if anybody likes me.
I understand. I, and that was a joke, come on, Larry. I, right, I have tried to do the mayor's desk so that that's an update and, and I know people, some people read it, some people don't. There's a lot of things that I write in there that's just general public, like, remember the time that I said it's cleanup time and, you know, the emergency cars have to get down the alleys, et cetera, et cetera? And the statutes actually read that you have to have your trees trimmed up, blah, blah. And people calling and saying, "How far back do you want to put it?" They were out cutting. People do want to do things right. And they, but sometimes they just need to be reminded. That's, to me, um, I don't, I don't try to make decisions except when the decision needs to be made right there.
There's a lot of times I read across the paper on Thursday and, "Wow, that's the first I know about this." And people says, "Read across the paper, what the hell's going on there now?" It's not...
Like what?
I can't remember one of the articles that you had in there and you were telling them that you were all planning to do and never brought it to the council or maybe you brought it to someone else.
No, 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 no.
Well, yes, yes.
Nothing unless it was something like that, cleaning up the alleys. I don't have to bring that, that's a statute. Why do I have to bring that to you to see if I write it in the paper? It's a statute.
I, some of the stuff that I find out at the council, when I find out by reading the paper and not hearing it from a day-to-day basis, what the council's supposed to be doing. A council's supposed to, we're supposed to sit and talk about it like we did tonight and we need to know about this.
You know what? I asked you guys if you would just come in and talk with me and you know what you told me? By gosh, we're going to do this in a meeting, we're not going to come in and talk to you. Not a one of you has come in and just sat down and said, "Can we talk about this?" Not a one of you.
Did we get word HYZ in? Were we going there and putting our opinion?
Have you ever tried?
I've been in the fight and it bolted in the paper.
I haven't tried it.
And it wasn't good, it didn't show a good light on me.
Well...
That's why I don't want to come into that.
If you, but you know what? You walked in and said, "This is what's going to happen, Cheryl, I'm not going to put up with this." That's the way you are.
Not once, not one time.
Okay.
Not one.
We'll never get this settled.
Not one time.
I don't, because, you know, you have accused me tonight of several things that aren't true and you're not going to let us...
They mean. No, trust me, it's not me.
That's me, sorry.
Oh, boy, I heard it come off the sheet.
I'm in a city council meeting, what are you doing?
Oh, I'm trying to...
Yeah, just a little.
I don't know.
What are you doing?
Trying to walk this baby out.
I'll talk to you later. Josie's due, she's trying to walk the baby out. Love you, babe.
Bye.
Bye-bye. Sorry, folks, you all know Jos. They're trying to get the baby on the ground because Brad's got to deploy. They'd like to get him, get that baby before he leaves the country. So we'll forgive her, I will. So I want to encourage you to come in and sit down and discuss stuff, but let me know ahead of time. Say, "I want to come in and talk about the lost funds, I want to come in and talk about this." Then we can have the paperwork out that you want to see, we can get out any reports you want to see.
Well, we can't over these tonight because we don't know what's going on.
Well...
There's a few issues on there that I'm concerned about and you know where they are. The overtime and the lost fund is still the same amount of money what we've had for months. Are the books closed? You keep telling me they're going to get closed. I haven't seen them closed.
The lost funds are not the same all the time.
I'm not saying, I said the lost fund has been the same money and then has the books been closed since the audit?
No, they, they are, they are stuck. They are stuck. We've got to get Eddie Dunstick up. They're, they set this...
We can't just, we got to have them every month. I understand you must have worked around...
I understand that, I understand this, Larry, I understand this. But it doesn't do any good for you to keep telling me that 150,000 times. You don't want me in the books, you don't want me to come to the office, but you want me to close the books.
We have a treasurer that hasn't been here, treasurer is by law, is supposed to be given the council a report, am I right, Mike?
She gives you reports, that's the reports.
She in person is supposed to be giving us, if we have questions, if we have questions for the treasurer, you can't answer them because you're not the treasurer.
When we have this review, the audit and talk about the finances, will she be present then?
I don't know, yeah, we can have her present if you want. We'll look at the statute as to what the job of the treasurer and what the job of the clerk does if you want. You're sitting here making a big deal and I, whoever, when did you ever hear one of the clerks or treasurer come in and do anything? But now all of a sudden it's wrong. The only one you ever heard was Charlie was, I think she was the treasurer, who said she didn't know books and she couldn't do them, but she was the treasurer. And she gave some reports, mostly for the first year I was there, she would lay a bank book in front of us and say, "I called the bank today and the balance with so-and-so with X amount of less outstanding checks," and that was our financial report. We've come a long way from there. And, and so, you know, um, yes, I've made some changes. Eddie said they were good, so auditors didn't complain. So you now have numbers on there and you have clear accounts, what went in and out of those accounts, you can isolate any one of them. You couldn't do that before.
You told us that we couldn't talk about the overtime at the general meeting here, we got to go executive session. We've never done it. We keep asking, "Where's the overtime being spent?" You say it's all this one or that one. We've got to, if we got to go executive sessions...
Well, you know what? Everything's on here, right there, it's right there and every one of those has, under your general, 6105 has your regular pay, your overtime pay, your holiday pay, your sick pay, it's all broken out for you.
That's what he's talking about, he's just questioning what the overtime individuals paid for or whatever. I know as a public employee myself, I printed up the paper, so I was just wondering...
You got to do it in, you can't do it out here.
I overdosed it in the paper, so it made public notice that everything.
Absolutely.
So I don't know, I don't see...
The guys, the guys are the only ones that make overtime. If you don't want them to work overtime, you've got to hire that person.
Well, I've been here a long time and I've seen a lot of things in this town.
I know that.
And it's, I don't know, I think we...
If you are, if you are going to, if you're going to do a job evaluation, I've never complained about you talking about how many hours overtime. But if you're going to do a job evaluation, that's going to be in a closed meeting and you have to notify those guys that you're going to do it.
I realize it, I realize it.
Okay.
I understand.
So I don't want to talk about it, talk about it and talk about it. If you actually want that, then you make a list of what you want to talk about so that they and I can be prepared, okay?
And how much notice do we need from the individual that we're going to do this to?
They have to know. Well, it's going to be at a city council meeting, isn't it?
It's got to be prior month or that month or...
You can, sometime before the meeting, I don't...
You have, who, do you notify the individual that we're going to talk?
I would assume so.
Okay.
That doesn't mean that I'm the one that's going to have the questions, but...
Are we going to consider to have a special meeting next week?
We should.
I mean, we have to, you know, we have to...
Yeah, I was wondering if there are job descriptions and evaluations in that, in that written book.
The code, your ordinance has a list of all the duties, responsibilities of each of the individuals, from the treasurer all the way down to the zoning officer.
Then doesn't it have some type of an evaluation form or...
It does not have any evaluation.
All right, so it makes it hard to base something on, as such, we have some evaluations, some historical record, whatever. So I don't know, at some point in time, we need to figure out some formal evaluation.
Well, why don't you come up with something? What do you want them to do? You know, realistically, I think most of you get tired following them around, figuring out what has to be done.
No, I'm just saying that you and then everybody gets evaluated.
You don't.
I do.
Well, come on, we're doing, we're talking about an formal evaluation from somebody about your job. The only way you get out of your job is through an election. So no, there is no, it's formal evaluation of the council or the mayor, that's an elected position.
Our value and high values are both.
I understand that, but...
As a teacher, though, as a professional...
I understand that, but we cannot sit here and evaluate each other, we're not going to.
No, I'm not talking about us, I'm just talking about all, in fairness to any employee, they should have an evaluation.
I, we need to, we need to approve the finances so that they can get sent...
Just claims.
Yeah, just claims, yeah, the claims.
I'll approve the claim that what they've retold me.
James will put a motion out to, to claims and...
I'll see.
Seconded by Bob. So Island?
Yes.
Bob?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
And Larry?
Yes.
And I would entertain a motion to...
Wait, wait, we got to change this meeting. You didn't, you talked about that to the, you have a big work on that, the meeting, James, from the first Monday?
I thought you decided that, the last time we talked, you said, we said that's going to be an issue if you go to the third Monday because the bills are going to be paid.
I said, then I said, "Let's go to the second Thursday, the 10th month would be done, our bills would be in, we'd have a little current thing on what's going on."
The second Thursday, they could do, we still have bills due by the 17th.
Come to this ball, Bob? You know, what's going on?
Well, you have to come up with something, they're a bit of a month behind on their finances every month.
Well, we're six months behind.
Well, I hope you are. I hope we are, but every month, we can't be, we can't be sitting there a month behind on our stuff.
Oh, okay, so there's one other thing on the approving of the claims. On those claims, on the, in that group of things you have that, you guys call it a wish list because it's actually a necessity list. We're talking about what you want to get done and you have, you kind of said that you don't want them fixing the street, is that right?
Correct.
That's right.
So what are you going to do about the potholes soon?
They can fix potholes, I'm not talking about, I'm talking about tearing up a whole street and redoing the whole street, that's an object. Is there the pothole out there, kill it? I'm not talking, I'm not going to let them.
I contacted nine brothers.
James, come on, I'm not going to let them.
No, I shouldn't say, I should recreate that, I'm not going to say, I just don't think we need to go and dig up, or one, we don't have the proper equipment.
We, we would have, but with one more piece of equipment.
Our payload is not big enough, correct?
We can rent that. We have a budget for this.
Okay.
All right, we need to spend money on the streets or we lose the money next year. So if you guys want to sit on this money and lose it and then have no roads, then this is all on you.
Take away that, I have a, I have a lesson in here from Night River.
Yep, forty-five thousand dollars to do a half a block.
What?
Do you show me a bit?
I don't think it's a half a block.
That's exactly what it is.
Nine hundred and thirty-two square yards and one was at two inches of toothache for twenty-six dollars and ninety-seven cents per square yard. Comes up to twenty-five thousand, one hundred and sixty for, I don't have the math in terms where you can see how much a block would be.
Okay, let me see if I've got the same one you've got. Okay, very front page says. Fairly conservative and price would obviously go down per square foot or square yard if we ended up doing more work. Minimum we could come out to pay would be at least two hundred thousand, two, two thousand square yards ideally. So then it has the measurements given was nine hundred and thirty-three and that was square yards and that's approximately one block, excuse me, one block and a half block. So then you look at their estimate, they give you a two inch mill and a four inch hot mix added back into it. That's unit price of thirty-six, sixty-nine for the amount of thirty-four thousand, two hundred and twenty-two dollars. Notes, these are strictly, strictly budget numbers, the proposed asphalt work that was given by the city, Night River will provide the estimates once the actual work is defined. It includes one mobilization of our asphalt crew, additional mobilization, additional mobilizations of thirty-five hundred per mobilization. That means just to set up to do another block. There is no bond here, the dues or incidentals, none of that's being charged on this. No staking, layout or survey work is included. No backfilling, inlet, throat, sawing, removals, backwash pits are included. No traffic control markings, flagings, no testing, inspection or reporting, none of that, no grading, no subgrade prep. They're taking out two inches and putting four in, so they're going to have to do some subwork, remove, subgrade, removal, sawing is, is, there's none of that included. The owner will be responsible for onsite locates of utilities and the above prices, specifications, et cetera, are satisfactory and hereby accepted. And that's if we want them to commit forty-five thousand to a block of work with none of this inclusion in the cost. So, I talked with Steve Parr, our, our street engineer and I said, you know, I just, I didn't try to get into all this, I said, you know, knowing what we have, we have soft spots, we have a strip out here where we do our asphalt or do our cold mix, et cetera. We bought the milling machine because not only does it take the material up, it has a hopper that holds that mix, your hot mix and your stuff back into it, you reuse what you take out of those potholes instead of throwing it in the ditch. And then you lay it back down. And I said, you know, we're looking at comparison, he said, don't waste your time, he said it can lay it so much easier, cheaper and more efficient than anybody you can hire. It's going to cost you all that and the like, I didn't go any further.
I had an also, what you just said, if they gave me another estimate, a two inch mill with a two inch fill for twenty-five thousand for a block.
Okay.
And it still has this, but he said, I went to Fort Ice and I watched them do it down Fort Ice. They took two inches off and laid it back on there.
And how, what did they mix it with?
They came from Yankton, the trucks were yesterday.
It was all brand new.
They come brand new stuff, it's not, no used stuff at all.
Okay, so, so what did they put it down with?
A machine, a regular road machine.
So they didn't use the miller that they brought it up with? They, they just got, just milled it?
They brought in a little machine and laid it down, just like you see on the highways.
Okay, laid it down.
They build it up and then they just gave it to Fort Ice.
That, that's, that's stuff we don't even have, they didn't have it then, what? They had brand new stuff at Yankton.
So what was the, what was the company?
Night River.
Night River.
So why didn't they give us some of that?
I talked to a guy named Jacob that's running this crew out here on 121, he gave me two estimates. One for the two inch with four, right there, at thirty-four, you're right on that number. They gave me another one for twenty-five. And they gave exactly what Fort Ice did, they take two inches off all the way across the road from curb to curb. And some of them didn't have curbs in, they just went to where the street was and they just left, they didn't build nothing up or nothing. I, I was impressed.
No bond due or no bond.
They didn't have to do none, they just milled two inches off, they didn't have to do no.
But they're going to have to have the bonding and that, no testing inspections or, but there's no grading, no subgrade, no prep, no removable. You're just going to pull us up and then throw something back down and not worry.
That whole thing down in Fort Ice, who downed it all, cost five hundred thousand dollars. And down there to measure how many streets they done, how wide they done and what they did with it. Now, we got a problem that they don't have, we got some streets who took some, down, down by Troy, that were eight, ten inches above the curb that's going to be milled off. And that's going to be more than two inches. But if Fort Ice out there is done, I talked to guys, I was down there and they've done that whole thing for five hundred thousand dollars. They got a four hundred thousand dollar grant and they have to come up with a hundred thousand dollars and make, they have to go over here.
Well, great, thank you.
How much do we get from the state, we get seventy-five grand a year from the state, right?
Somewhere around a hundred, I think.
We get a hundred grand from the state. What do we budget?
And that depends on.
Right, but let's just, let's just give us a number, a hundred grand, so how much do we budget in to have the guys do what they're going to do?
We spent, we've spent, we have to, I take that back James, we probably do get about seventy-five because according to that highway allocation, we have to match it with local funds up to twenty-five percent. And I think we've been, I think we've been at like a hundred and twenty-five, a hundred and twelve somewhere.
So would it, would it make that work? Wouldn't it make more sense to have them give us a bid and do a loan and have all the trees done one time? I mean, the interest rates right now are stupid cheap.
And cost of materials up.
Yeah.
Right?
But it didn't matter if the cost of materials had given to us by Night River or the cost of materials we use out on the side, the exact same cost.
You know, and I understand what you're saying, that all makes perfectly good sense if you're on a flat level and this is what you do, you take it up like that. We have a lot of problem areas that we need to cope with and we need that.
And you're, and you're right, but we have problems whether Night River does it or these guys do it.
But why are we so anxious to pay them to do it, is what I want to know.
Why wouldn't you, why?
Do you think that you, do you think that, see?
Do I think they would do a better job, I think these guys did good work here, does Night River come with more expertise and better equipment?
Yes.
Well, better equipment for sure, we haven't had any.
And more expertise.
Yes.
That's, that's all they do.
It won't tie up our city workers, but it's going to take three to four people to do what we have.
I'm not sure what the city workers can do, I'm just saying, why don't we, why don't we explore this?
We can't get that four hundred thousand dollar grant.
No, I'm not.
And, and we have, and we have to pay five hundred thousand instead of a hundred thousand a year for five years. Because if we're going to borrow that money, yeah, the interest rate's cheap, but we still got to borrow money.
But the money comes from the city and we already funded it. If we borrowed a million dollars over ten years, it's right here, it's right here. I can do the math, I can add. If we guaranteed seventy-five thousand from the state and we've already budgeted twenty-five, that's a hundred grand, ten years.
We're not, we're not guaranteed that, but.
That's, that's a good question though, are we guaranteed that, that's a good question for our city guy, is that a guarantee?
They base, they base what we get, is what I've been told is what, partly what we spend, well, here, I know, here. It's a formula, see if I can say it right. How many lanes of road we have, and I do this report every fall. How many lanes of road, a lane is what a car runs down, so we've got two lane road out here. How many, what's our population? And then they have the formula that they work that out and that's what the state allows. So with the drop of population or with the drop of road lanes or whatever. Then if we don't spend it, then they drop that formula.
Great, so I don't see us dropping any road lanes and I don't see our population the next year, year going down. I guess my question to our guy is, could we count on that money for ten years?
Don't know.
Could we ask him?
Sure.
Could we ask him? Because I think we.
Probably the highway, the state, the state department of roads would be the people that would know more than anybody else.
Well, he obviously does the numbers for us, he's got to have an idea, is this something we can count on for ten years? Five years, eight years, three years, two years? But I think it's worth looking into and I remember, I talked to Patrick and asked him, I see a price on cement. That's one thing that has not gone up is cement, now REBAR has gone up, but cement itself has not.
But Night River did tell me, they were here, they went down this main street and the one going past the lumberyard and up past wall, two houses. That's got cement underneath, now that's going to be a difficult thing.
Yeah, because if.
Because if cement dropped, that machine will be burning up soap. James got the perfect idea, we throw our money together, if we get this money and get, excuse me, and get these side streets where these holes and potholes that we keep filling, and get that down, then we'll put in four, cement down the main street this way and the main street that, two main streets. Pour them out, get that content, then you're going to have to have a surveyor in there and you got hole works. Because we got utilities running in that stuff, cross it by the lumberyard, there's a big utility line that runs down there. There's all kinds of lines that are running in the city, but most of them run down the main streets, the waters and everything. So, I think, I think doing off streets with this asphalt. And if we do, let's say three blocks in one year, or four blocks in one year, the people in town will see that we are trying to do this and we don't have to touch it every year and repatch it. I got some tires in front of my house where every time they pass it, they go, I dug it out myself and poured concrete in there myself.
And some of these places, I wouldn't have a problem with that, but if that's really high, we got to get it out, maybe it would be wise for those two to go in and take that down and let that night river.
He's got the material he owns out of our machine, it's hilarious.
Yeah, I have no problem, but I think we need to, before we just start failing everything, let's, let's take a look at every option.
I agree.
And come up with a good plan.
Kevin, did you want to say something?
I, I was just going to say kind of casually that I've got spots in front of my house that there's an inch or two that's peeling off.
Yeah.
This, this, this loose.
Listen guys, the, those, those guys bitch first to tell you that the roads are probably the worst they've been for years, they know that. Larry has been told that that strip has to last for three years in the past. It's worthless by the time you get to the third year. That's why I told him last year, build the strip and use it. So what they laid last year, but now it needs to be overlaid, it needs to be chipped and sealed. And if we can't get the oil and, you know, then, and, and effectively you guys have kind of said, no, we're not going to spend any of that. So we don't want to order oil and stuff and then you don't approve it.
I don't want to, I don't want to order any oil.
If you put oil on our curbs, you're going to.
No, we're not talking about.
No, but I, let's, let's get a plan, let's get a, let's get a hard quote from Night River for the streets. And I'd like to see a quote on cement, I'd like to see a quote before we go and start spending money again on something that we.
Patrick? Yeah.
I've got a question for the council, I mean, a lot of people, building concrete is expensive at the beginning, but in the long run it's.
It's the best.
Everybody knows that, okay, but my question is, what do we do, we're going to replace all the streets?
We need a.
Next summer?
We need a number, but we need a number.
We need it now.
No, I'm saying.
Boomer has been, has had scans I've had, he was told here by two hundred and fifty, he went, you guys must be experts because if I ask you to come talk to us and you won't do it. We'll write next week, next week, next week. One of the big questions is what do we do, have you driven the street? We got, yes.
True.
We got forty blocks, that's, we need a lot of work on that. He's been told you that you got oil and chipped seals streets every five years, we've gone seven years because they couldn't, they wouldn't let them buy oil. If they let them buy oil, it was the light stuff, not heavy stuff. There's been so much that he's had to put up with, the boards, the, you know, whoever, you know, blaming on whoever, but. How do we do this?
I, we talked, you and I talked down in the pool.
We're going to build a pool?
No, we talked about cement in the roads, we did, we talked, we found.
James, what do we do about your block that's bad right now? What are we going to do?
You can't build a wall, that's what he's saying.
We can build a wall one year.
No, we can't.
We can build all these roads in one year, why couldn't we, they're doing, they're doing fifty miles, one twenty. What's that?
How many blocks we have now, I think you have ten.
That's what I'm saying, let's, let's get a number.
Forty times thirty-five thousand, you got about seventy-five thousand for concrete, what's forty times seventy-five?
Well, the 121 project is little over four million dollars and we're not going that far. No. Right? No. No, what I'm saying, what I'm saying, Pat, we need, we need numbers. I want to see. How far?
Yeah, but, and we're asking what we do with streets now.
You go back and forth, I think you get about a million dollars straight up, that's ten miles. We got more than that.
This stuff now, I mean, we've got fourteen blocks that we overlaid and we don't have, we probably don't have enough material out there to fix and run in the potholes. What, what about the street in front of the school? You know, it is bad. If we wait another winter, some of these roads, if we wait one or two more years and don't repair them the way they need to now, we don't have hardly anything. It's exponential, we've got to keep the moisture out from under that stuff. You know, and there's comments about eight, ten, twelve inches. I mean, we dug through the street in front of that and there's two inches and they showed them that. What, what do we do about this, there's this information and stuff?
You talk about that, right by my place, the manhole up there, when he does that, there is ten years of oil for our pastime, they, every three, two years they got a hole there. There's so much water comes on this street and he spoil up. Now we can keep doing that every year and every year and every year.
No, I'm not, I'm not saying that.
That's why, exactly what he said, but you need to look at some alternatives.
I, I agree, but what can we do with our bad streets and the weeds?
I think, does anybody know how long it takes them to do Fort Ice?
Oh shit. Oh, I don't think they had it in a week, they were done.
So they, if we got them, could they do all of Cottin in two weeks?
Sure. I'm jumping out of the car.
If you want to do that.
Yeah, James, can.
But we don't know that.
Well, we're supposed to take care of the streets, that we have to do the best we can. But I don't have all we need to do, I mean, we're just asking you, you're right, we need to look at this. And argue a bit about that.
But I don't want to put.
Let's do it all in concrete, I agree.
Right.
What are we doing with the time?
I don't want to put a penny in it today if we replace it in August.
Okay, all right, okay.
But we need a plan. We have, we have a start. We have a start, what's that?
Do all this in a year's time.
Sure, why not?
Does that mean possible?
We don't know, but it's worth looking into, I don't know, but we have a start, we don't know. But until I know for sure, I don't want to put another penny into our roots. For one, we got to figure out if we can even get that money for ten years.
What happens if we have a wet fall, we don't have a freeze, all this water goes under this bad pavement that we have. Our, our, the garbage service, no fault of their own, that wet washing drowning loss through the asphalt. We need to keep the water out of that, these are things that they call, I'm not, I don't have the answers, I know you don't have all the answers, but. Here, what we're saying and, and do us.
Well, let's, let's.
Let's have, let's, let's consider having a town hall meeting like over two weeks.
It would be a smart thing to do. What, what we need Cheryl, is we need, we need to get these companies in here and give us an idea what it's going to cost.
They don't come out for just nothing, Jake.
Yeah, I met with Night River, we drove around town with the guy.